Hello and welcome. Good evening. Call meeting to order. Can we have the rule call?
Councilmember Evans.
Present.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Here.
Mayor Millman.
Here.
Councilmember Bess Campbell.
Present.
Councilmember Arndt.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
I move to exclude Councilmember Taylor. He emailed us earlier that he would be traveling today.
Second it. Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Can we all rise for the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to approve the agenda in order and content.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. First on, we have two presentations this evening. And first presentation is State of the College, Cascadia College, and we have President Eric Murray here, please. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Mayor, council. Glad to be here again, and thanks for having me. And I get to control this myself. All right. I hope I don't screw it up. The city manager asked as I was walking in if I ever get tired of doing these, and the answer is no. Because I'm excited to share about my work. I've spent 15 years at the college and seeing it grow and thrive and serve our communities is my passion. And I really want to pay a special acknowledgement before we get started to Councilmember Evans, who I got the chance to really get to know better over the last year. And her child went to Cascadia and the Woodinville Chamber of Commerce, I know that Kimberly's back here, has been a super huge supporter of the college. And so just really thrilled to be in a community that embraces their community college. So we're here to talk about Cascadia, and we are in our 25th year of existence. We've been in the community for 25 years. And we'll talk about successes, challenges, and I have some invitations for you today. Successes. Enrollment is 25% up. After multiple years of declining enrollment, we went down by about 45% during the pandemic years. We are fully rebounding, and we think there are a lot of reasons for that. There are different kinds of things. The city of Kenmore gave us a grant for more than $100,000 to tutor students who had experienced gaps during the pandemic years and didn't have quite the math and English skills to be up at college level when they should have been. So we offered extra tutoring to students who lived in Kenmore. We opened up a center in Redmond at the Together Center, if you're familiar with that, on the ground floor underneath five stories of affordable housing, and our programs there are thriving. And we continue to have student of color conferences where almost 1,000 students come to our campus every spring. High school students from all over Western Washington just to experience what college is like and understand that there is opportunity for them. We've been working on retention efforts. We have an intrusive mentoring, or sorry, I'll get to that in advising. We have a mentoring program that continues to grow and grow. We started with 12 students during the pandemic. We're up to serving more than 100 students in individual one-on-one mentoring. That's been shown to be the, one of the most important factors at retaining students. We also have intrusive advising, meaning you can't register for your next quarter's classes until you've talked to an advisor. Before, you could do that on your own. Now you have to talk with a staff member in order to make sure that you're on the right path towards completion. And we've also embedded tutors in English and math. Students who have taken the course already, who are there taking the course again, simply to help other students succeed and provide tutoring to those students. Is there a post-pandemic rebound? Yeah, we think so. Other colleges are experiencing this as well, but not to the extent that Cascadia is. We by far have outpaced our other sister colleges in enrollment increases. I also continue to think that cost is a great benefit. You can go to UW for $14,000 or $15,000, but you can go to Cascadia for $4,000. And after two years at Cascadia, you are almost guaranteed entrance into UW. We have a 95% acceptance rate of Cascadia students into UW when they've completed two years with us. And we serve over 1,000 Running Start students from more than 45 high schools. So for perspective, there are 10 high schools in our service district, all of the cities up here in the north side of the lake. 45 high schools actually have students that they're sending to us for Running Start programs. That's how good our program is. And so what else is going on? I think some of you may have come to our grand opening of our science building innovation hall last year, $80 million building. We have a new building that's on the docket to be built starting July 1, as long as the legislature comes through with what they've said they're going to do, and that's a student services building. So it's your first stop, your gateway into Cascadia. Over the last few years, we've seen more than $500,000 of giving to our Cascadia College Foundation, which we relaunched about three years ago. We have a community advisory committee where different community members come and just talk about what the trends are in the community. And Councilmember Evans has been to that, as well as Kimberly from the chamber. And we have 15 to 20 people who come every three months just to talk to us about what the trends are, how the college can serve them, and how they see things playing out in our community so that we can respond to that. We continue to have a great relationship with UW Bothell, as I mentioned, our transfer rates. And we also offer a Foundations of Equity and Inclusion course, which has been picked up by multiple agencies outside of Cascadia. That's just your basic understanding of what equity means, what inclusion means. And the King County Library System and private companies and other folks are sending their employees to that course, which happy to offer to the city if they decide that they want to have some kind of training in that, we can do it for you. So there are challenges, and last fall, we had a difficult time finding instructors. Before, we had a difficult time finding students. Now we're having a difficult time finding instructors because all of our part-time instructors kind of faded away when we didn't have students for them to teach. Now we have this influx of students, and we're trying to reel in people to teach for us. We're also trying to get the right mix of classes down in Redmond. We're trying to respond to Running Start students and ESL students, and we're figuring that out. And we continue to have staffing turnover. I think a lot of businesses and agencies are seeing that in their businesses. Facility growth, there's still some, this was really meant for last fall. We've seen supply chain catch up right now, but we still see some issues there. We certainly want to make sure we get Gateway Hall. And I keep, I'll be down in the legislate in Olympia eight times this coming spring just to make sure the legislature doesn't lose sight of funding our building. It's on the list. I don't want it to fall off the list. And then before the pandemic, Bothell City has this code where we had to have so many parking spots per number of students we had on campus. So we built this great big $30 million parking garage. Well, now that we're post-pandemic, we have a lot more online courses, and I don't have a need for a parking garage. So if anybody would like to rent parking, if the city is interested in investing in a contract with me, you please let me know, and we'll be happy to shuttle students, or shuttle workers into Woodinville for you. There are some invitations I want to extend to you. On February 26, just in a couple of weeks, we are having our 25th celebration for our anniversary. I've already sent all of the city council an invitation to that. I hope you'll be able to make it. And then I would say join the community advisory council, but you already have somebody coming. But certainly anybody is welcome to join us and talk to us. Our next meeting is on April 3. And then I'm not going to need help with the legislature because our building got on the list. But I was asking last fall for different city councils and school districts to help us out in the event that that didn't happen. If you know of anybody who has a master's degree in English or a master's degree in anything, that's what you need to teach College 101, we would certainly welcome applications on our website for part-time teaching faculty, both in our Bothell campus as well as the Redmond campus. And if that Foundations of Equity and Inclusion course sounds right for the city, please reach out to us. We are doing well, and I have no concerns at this point in time. And I'm just happy to report that we are, continue to serve the city and the students in the city. And happy to answer questions if you have time or desire.
Councilmember Bess Campbell.
So there was a report in the newspaper a few weeks ago about declining test scores in both reading and arithmetic. And I was curious if you've seen that trend at Cascadia, and then how are you guys adapting to sort of fill in the gap that's been created by the pandemic, but also funding shortfalls and all that? How are you guys coping with that?
So multiple methodologies there. One was the Kenmore grant that I mentioned. We absolutely do see it. Students are coming less prepared. Our developmental math courses, our developmental English courses are full. What we do with that is we try to pair up those classes. So often, for example, in a math class, you might be just below that level of collegiate skill. And we'll sometimes pair you with those developmental students with a first course in college math. And those students kind of get a mixed experience, and we find that they excel quicker when they're in that environment. We've also relied heavily on school districts. We don't have placement testing scores to get into Cascadia math. We actually use your high school grades as one of our main factors for influencing placement into math and English. That's really been helpful because some students don't test well, but yet they know the material. So we have three or four or five different ways to deal with that, and we think we are moving students along. In fact, I know we are moving students along that path from developmental gap to college level at a pretty quick pace. Students were pretty successful in our program.
And just one follow-up. It sounds like this mentoring program that you have where you're pairing students off, have you shared that with high schools as maybe something that they should consider using so that they don't have to come to you and learn how to do that? It seems like it'd be easier for you.
I would love to, and I just offered to the North Shore School District, I don't know if you heard, their superintendent will be retiring this year, so I will be hopefully involved in the search for a new superintendent. And absolutely, I love sharing our programs with them and learning from their programs. But that mentoring program is staff-intensive. We have one mentor for every four students who sign up for the program. And finding 25 qualified mentors who have the time to volunteer to do that can be tough.
Any other questions? Councilmember Evans.
No question. I just wanted to say thank you for coming tonight. I know I've seen this a couple of times. But I really do appreciate all the work that you and your faculty do for the community. And I appreciate the extra above and beyond effort of trying to make sure that you're getting out there into the community and serving in a way that kind of lifts everybody up. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Have a good night.
Next, we have a report from Puget Sound Energy. I reached out after the bomb cyclone, which is a significant event around here. I reached out to PSE, and Matt Larson kindly agreed to come and explain what happened during the bomb cyclone and other things that are going on. PSE, appreciate you coming. Welcome.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember, thank you for the opportunity tonight. Mayor already did much of my introductions, so I'll just cut to it. I'm joined here tonight by my colleague, Mary Hobday. Mary is the contingency emergency manager, or planning manager at PSE. And so she'll be addressing most of the details of the report tonight. Mary, I talked to the city manager. We may, if, she's going to try and run the presentation, but if it's a little too small or illegible, we might just flip to do it internally. And then, Mary, I can advance the presentation here at your prompts. So with that, and without further ado, and then we'll, of course, address any questions and concerns the council may have at the end. So, Mary, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. And thank you, council and council members, for inviting Puget Sound Energy to share the information on the bomb cyclone with you because that was a big event for all of us. So, Matt, you did want me to go ahead and try to share my screen?
Yeah, go ahead and try. We'll see if it looks legible or readable.
Okay. Just a moment here.
Okay, I think that looks great. Okay.
Okay. And while I present, I'm going to go ahead and turn my camera off because I'm really working off of two monitors, and so I really won't be looking at you, but I'll come back. And everybody can hear me okay? Okay, perfect. Okay. So as Matt said, my name is Mary Hobday, and I'm with our emergency management department for Puget Sound Energy. And I've been with Puget Sound Energy for 12 years, and prior to that, I worked actually for local city emergency management. Okay, let's see if it progresses here. Okay. A little bit about Puget Sound Energy. Man, my camera came back on. Just a moment. A little bit about Puget Sound Energy. We're Washington's oldest local energy company for Western Washington. We have approximately 1.2 million electric customers and over 900,000 natural gas customers. And we have nearly 3,300 employees. And in King County, we have over 599,000 electric customers and nearly 492 natural gas customers. So let's talk a little bit about the storm itself. If you remember, that storm actually hit fairly late in the day on November 19. And we had started monitoring this storm as early as Friday. Last year, we hired our own in-house meteorologist, which has been very helpful for us in really watching these storms very closely. We get a little bit more detail than we would from the National Weather Service. Of course, we still listen to theirs and make sure that we're in sync with them. It's also helping us as we move into wildfire season. So this storm, you can see this cyclone area there. It's circular, like you would expect, really thick. It started moving in on the 19th, kind of earlier in the day. And it created this really high, tight pressure gradient over the cascades. And it really favored strong winds coming in from the east. Because as this turns, it pulls way in there, and then it pulls back out, and it circles around there. So that's why it was pushing those easterly winds. They started to impact our system around 5:00 PM, and by 7:00 PM, we already had about 164,000 customers out with over 118,000 of those in King County. And if you look at this bottom graphic here, it shows you really the pressure gradients of this storm. The tighter the lines on this graphic, the stronger the winds. And here you can see the cascades and the cascade foothills all the way down from King County, Snohomish County, basically, all the way down into about Thurston County. Really tight gradients that are going to cause those strong winds. And that system remained off of the coast for a while, then it drifted westward. After it hit us on the 19th, then it slowly but surely moved westerly. And the wind was a lot hot, caused a lot more damage than we really anticipated, although we knew that it was going to be very damaging from our weather report. So we were very proactive. We were meeting on Saturday and Sunday and into Monday. On Monday, we decided to go ahead and preemptively open up four of our storm bases or our operating bases for emergency mode, as well as our emergency coordination center, just so that we could be ready. We also were pre-staging some crews at that point. Now, I'm hoping that this shows, this is a video that actually was really timely and just came out about two weeks ago. And so I'd like to play it for you, and it really kind of gives you a feel for that storm. Hopefully, you can hear the sound. Matt, tell me if...
I'm not hearing the sound again.
You cannot hear the sound?
No, we can see the video.
Okay, I have to figure out, share sound. There we go. Okay.
And I don't know if you, it's on a separate screen now, Mary, with YouTube. If you could just maximize, hit the maximize button on the YouTube, that lower right corner in the video screen.
Okay, there we go.
The bomb cyclone that slammed through our region in November wreaked havoc throughout much of our service area, seriously damaging our infrastructure and causing widespread outages that affected nearly 60% of our electric customers, leaving many without power for days.
It's really hard to pick a worst hit. It honestly is. I mean, some of our areas saw stronger winds than...
The storm is considered the region's worst in two decades, but it brought out the best in our employees, contractors, and partners as they came together to care for our customers. They are the heroes of this story. We started preparing early. Our PSE meteorologist began monitoring this storm a week ahead of landfall. Before the storm hit, we had more than 30 line crews on site. We positioned first response line workers and field employees, as well as activating four storm bases and our emergency coordination center ahead of the storm hitting. Our teams mobilized quickly with an all-hands-on-deck approach to ensure we were prepared to safely support our customers. Early calls for volunteers resulted in more than 500 employees who stepped up to join their teams. In all, we staffed over 2,700 PSE employees, as well as contract crews, to tackle the monumental task of repairs. That included 164 line crews and 70 tree crews, about four times the amount of normal operations. Restoration efforts were complex and time-consuming, considering the extensive damage. Hundreds of trees came down as a result of this storm. This led to significant damage to our infrastructure, even leading to damage on many of our underground cables. Many jobs required multiple resources and specialized equipment. 52 substations were knocked offline. Over 400 miles of transmission line were impacted, many in the mountainous and hard-to-reach terrain of the Cascade Mountains and foothills. Our first response line workers, crews, and field employees were on the front lines working day and night, often in treacherous terrain and conditions to clear the hundreds of fallen trees and repair the extensive damage to our infrastructure, even when they themselves were without power. In addition to our electric teams, our gas first responders answered the call, responding to a surge in emergency calls from broken pipelines to carbon monoxide calls and customers using backup generators during outages. Our gas first responders averaged more than 118 emergency calls a day during a storm, a 64% increase from our five-year daily average. When the restoration was complete, it was clear that our amazing employees in the field are our customers' champions, demonstrating their dedication to our core purpose, the safe and reliable delivery of energy to our customers 24/7, under all conditions.
Okay, I'm back. Can you hear me again there, Matt?
Yes, that went perfect. Thank you, Mary.
Awesome. So just a little bit more detail that you saw in that, and I'm sure that you guys were all watching the news during that time, if you had power, or certainly afterwards, you were watching the news and seeing the damage. I have some more pictures later on in the presentation to show you. So the winds blew from around 4:00 PM on the 19th through about 10:00 PM. So it was this constant high sustained winds and gusts. And you can see on that left side graphic that the wind gusts in King County were 50 to 70 miles per hour. So that's pretty strong, especially over that prolonged period. We had saturated soils, coupled with that wind direction, it had a major impact on the trees. We had 48 transmission line segments damaged, 52 substations damaged, nearly 554,000 customers system-wide impacted throughout the event. And 75, a little bit over 75% of those customers were in King County. We had a total of 2,100 outages, with about 1,600 of those in King County. And normally, in a three-day storm, and I always like to use that as a normal because when we have winter weather events, it's typically two to three days when we'll see outages, if it's a bigger storm. We might have, as far as the number of outage locations, we might have 750 to 1,000 outage locations. So this, and that would be spread out all over our system. King County normally does not get hit quite this hard. So this was a substantial hit in Woodinville and in all of King County. As that video mentioned, we had 164 line crews. And again, typically in that three-day storm, we'll have 40 to 60. It really depends on the type of damage we're seeing. We had about 70 tree crews, and again, it shows there normally we'll have about 20. But by the end of the day, on the 26th, less than 250 customers remained without power. And I can't remember, but I think that there was maybe a handful out on Thanksgiving, but not very many. We were pretty dedicated to getting everybody's power back on by Thanksgiving. So before we talk about restoration, it's kind of important that you understand how our system is put together and how it works. And I'm going to let Matt explain that.
Yeah, so quickly, I'll just use a metaphor. Some of my background's been involved in municipal government, too. So the metaphor, I think, that makes sense for city officials is thinking of it like a road system. So the transmission system is your, think of that your highways. It's the high voltage, 150, 230,000 kilo, volts. And, but to get that high voltage off of the transmission lines, you need an off-ramp like on the highway. So the off-ramp essentially is a substation. Substation will take that high voltage down to about 12,000 volts, and then from the substation, that off-ramp, it'll take three or four main arterial roads or distribution lines, feeder lines, that will take that electricity out into the community, and then hundreds of laterals off of that into all the neighborhoods. So think of that like your highways, off-ramps, arterial streets, and then all the feeder lines, or major collector roads and then feeder laterals. So think about that. When you go back to the statistics Mary went over, you have 42 of those off-ramps that were basically, you know, closed. And 48 of the major regional transmission lines that transmit, transmits electricity between communities and around the region that were effectively knocked out. So not only was that traffic or the current able to not move along that highway, it couldn't get off the highway. And so it's important to understand that because Mary will get into kind of, like you would responding to a snowstorm, city staff, how you would prioritize, you know, why aren't you doing my driveway right now? And you have to talk about how you get, you know, how you work through a prioritization process to eventually get to that neighborhood street. So it's helpful to understand kind of how that grid works so when Mary speaks to that prioritization process. Go ahead. Thank you, Mary.
Okay, thanks for that, Matt. I love that analogy. Okay, so restoration at all has to start with assessment. We have to know the type of damage we have at every location that has, like we told you, that there were 2,100 damaged locations. Each one of those locations, we have to send a damage assessor out there to see what the actual problem is, what type of crew it's going to need, what materials it needs. So it takes us a while to get through all of those. And we won't start assessing or fixing things if the winds are still really strong and we think that there may be a safety risk to our employees in the field. So once we've, that assessment starts coming through, and we don't wait till we've assessed all 2,100 of those where we're assessing, and then we're getting the materials we need and the crews we need, and then we're repairing. So it's just this ongoing process of assessing and repairing. We do some response prioritization as those assessments come in. And that is really a joint effort with our regional bases and our emergency coordination center. The emergency coordination center really sets kind of the high-level priorities. And then they make sure that the bases have the manpower and resources that they need. We also help with communications. The bases locally, they know their area, so they are prioritizing that restoration to happen as soon as possible. Once we kind of, they understand the damage and the priorities, then they start dispatching those resources as an assessment comes in. They know that it's a priority, and they'll dispatch the resources and the materials. And in generally speaking, and this goes to Matt's slide that he was talking about, we have to start with the transmission because it is our background. If we started trying to fix things that were closer to your home without fixing that transmission. If we started trying to fix things that were closer to your home without fixing that transmission, we'd potentially fix it, but nothing would happen, because it doesn't have any power coming from our transmission lines. So we really have to start with our transmission lines. We had to do several helicopter patrols. As Matt said, some of those are in locations that are really hard to reach, so we had to wait for light and do helicopter patrols. Then we moved down to our substation, and then we moved then to the feeders or our distribution from there. And each substation has multiple circuits, if you will, feeders coming out of it. And within the substation level and the distribution level, then we start looking at, okay, well, which circus ha, circus, which circuit has the highest number of customers associated with it? Are there any that have hospitals or water and wastewater systems, fire and LE dispatch centers, major communication towers, things like that that are critical community services? We'll look at within our prioritization as we're moving down through substations and the distribution circuits. And as far as the estimated time of restoration, I know that it was frustrating in this event. We have a new outage management system that we just started actually using in September. And we had had, like, a minor storm, I think, in, in Sep, the end of September, maybe early October, that we had used it for. But this was by far the largest event that we have used this new system with, and a large storm comparatively to any storms that we deal with. So that system was not talking with our outage map correctly, and so our outage map was showing things that were, were not quite the story, so we had to shut it down for a while. We weren't getting outage reports from customers in certain ways, so we had to work through all of those details from the ECC. But that estimated time of restoration, our goal is to just get you that as soon as possible. But we don't want to throw something out there. We'll throw, like, a system estimated time of restoration out there as soon as we can, but we need to know what the damage is before we kind of do that. And again, the storm was hard to get our arms around the total magnitude of that damage. So we kind of delayed it, and then we threw something out there, and then we changed it, and I know that that is frustrating, and that is not our goal. But that's what we're doing in, in the ECC, is we are really looking hard at the numbers we have, at the numbers of resources we have, and trying to decide how long it's going to take to restore everything. The interesting thing about the storm is that normally, in any one damage area, not area, but location, you'll see maybe one to two crews working on a damaged spot. In this storm, it was so significant that it was not uncommon to see four to six crews working at one location. Normally, to fix one of those damaged locations, we have an average that we estimate, that helps us in this estimated time of restoration. We estimate it to take about six hours to fix one location. Well, this was taking us, because of all the trees we had to clear and other things we were dealing with, it took 12 to 14 hours for just one location in some of those areas. So that kind of tells you a story of that storm and, and how we operate. But considering all of the damage and the number of outage locations, you know, we, I thought that we did fairly well. We were ready for it, and we were staffed up for it. Here are some additional pictures that I just wanted to throw out there of the extent of the damage. And as you can see in this one picture, there are a lot of crews along this one roadway, because this, these distribution lines, it was all the way down the roadway, and so we all have to work together on that. You can see here that we had some transformers that were on the ground up here and up here. That's a lot of damage to just get it to a situation where we can begin the repair. So that's really all I have, and I will entertain questions if you have them.
Yeah, thank you. I have a few, I've worked, at first, my appreciation to all the emergency responders on this, I've worked a wind event like that, where we were just hopping, and, and it was constant work, 30 calls in 24 hours, and so I really appreciate all the work. That kind of leads to one of my first questions. Did you get resources from other states and maybe Canada? Was my understanding, was that, is that accurate?
Yes. We got some from Idaho, Canada, Oregon, but we also got a lot from other areas in Washington that, that weren't impacted by the event. And you know, what, when we put our resources at those four bases that we had opened, as we reduce the number of outages in one area, we don't just release those people, we'll send them now to another region to help out. So we're constantly looking at our manpower and moving them as we need to.
Um, also, go ahead.
Well, Mayor, if I could add to, and I think the sense is, well, gosh, it seems like as you do further repairs, it should go faster and faster as the crews can be consolidated to the remaining ones. But there's also a process of diminished returns, where we can do 10 or 15 hours on a particular repair and benefit 3,000 or 4,000 customers. But, but it gets to where we're doing the same amount of repair that might only benefit 100, you know, as, as it goes kind of down that prioritization list. And so to Mary's point, we don't let those crews go, but it's going to take, you know, you need more crews to get the same kind of impact or result as we go down that list.
My next question is, this was an unusual wind event. Have you, has there been any discussions, do we anticipate, or have there been any discussions at your level as far as this is going to be more commonplace? And if so, is there something that PSE can do? Is there something the city of Woodinville can do to harden our resources and try to minimize the likelihood of this happening again? Is there anything underway or discussions about that?
Well, I'll speak, just a moment, Matt. I'll speak just from the emergency preparedness standpoint. We build our response protocols so that we can scale up or down depending on the size of it. As a matter of fact, right now, we're working on an earthquake plan, because that's going to be just a little bit different. But, so the processes don't change, it's just the amount of manpower that's going to change that we're going to bring onto it. As far as hardening, I'm going to let Matt speak to that.
Yeah, I'll do my best, Mary. You correct me or add to it if you'd like. The, as part of our complying with the Clean Energy Transition Act from the state, there's a lot of the things it's leaning into is going to make a more resilient system. For example, we just finished last year installing AMI or smart meters on all, on all of our customers. Those meters will, in the near future, give us the opportunity to be able to, to have the information fed to us automatically when an outage happens on a customer, rather than the customer reporting that. It's, it's also, I guess the metaphor I would use to liken it to the internet, the, you know, DARPA had the internet designed, you know, for kind of a military, if we were in time of war, where part of the system would be smashed, it would automatically reroute. So no matter in the internet, wherever you break it, emails and things are going to reroute or find a way to its destination in a similar fashion. The grid, our grid is becoming more and more resilient and smart by using auto reclosers and systems that will effectively, if you break a part of the system, rather than sending crews out to go evaluate what the damage is, it will have sensors that can automatically sort of assess the damage or the nature of it, and start to close and open switches to reroute around that damage, and usually very quickly get most of the customers back online, and then we can get out and to address the damage. And then wildfire, to your point about the weather, we are anticipating, we're taking seriously the, the anticipation that weather is fundamentally changing, which climate change. And one of the instances of that is our wildfire programs, where we, that's become, particularly after Maui and now in California, California, not only with the Paradise Fire, but the most recent ones down in Palisades. You know, a critical issue in terms of the gist of the profound damage that can cause. And so we, you can find on our website, a whole wildfire mitigation plan now, and a lot, a lot of ways we're leaning into that with different wire vegetation programs, or even using AI to cameras that can scan the horizon, looking for, that can sense fires much faster than human eye or human, human resources used in the past. So I'm sure I missed a half a dozen, that question's probably another half-hour presentation. Mary, can you think of anything else to add to that?
Yeah, I do just want to mention that we do have a very robust tree trimming program. So we're looking in areas that we know to be vulnerable from, like those gap winds, and we, we do a fair amount of tree trimming each year. And also, we do try to do undergrounding, and I can't remember how many miles of undergrounding we did, but you saw in this storm that it even impacted some of the underground. But, you know, we, there's a whole lot of thought that goes into, do we put overhead here? Do we put underground there? Because both have their pros and their cons. And then we also have some different wire, and I can't remember what it was, and it was in an email that I got the other day, and I can't remember what it is, but it's some more weather-resistant wire, distribution wire, if you will, that we're also installing. And, and this will happen over time, it's not going to all happen now. So we do have, our planning departments are always looking for ways to make our system more resilient.
Yeah, I think it's called tree wire. It's basically, most of the wire in a lot of transmission distribution lines is bare wire. These are insulated wires that will actually be more resilient to a branch striker that would often trip off a system. And again, before, if a branch strike like that would occur, we'd have to send a crew out there to evaluate, make sure everything's working before they turn it back on. But now auto reclosers will sense that automatically and trip those back on, so. And on the weather, Mayor, yeah, what was so unusual about bomb cyclone, I think Mary might have mentioned, is the winds came from an entirely opposite direction that our trees are used to sort of being used to, and now they've grown into, and that's why it was such devastation. What we thought was sort of a good news, it probably weeded out a lot of the weak stuff, because we were, as you noticed, notices I was pushing out, we were all nervous, like, oh man, everybody's Christmas is going to be spoiled, because there was another system, serious system that came in. But fortunately, it seemed like the bomb cyclone did its work shaking everything loose, because we, you know, were spared from further damage with, as we ran into the Christmas week there.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, thank you for this great presentation. As the mayor highlighted, grateful for the work the responders did serving this community. Amazing work. My question is, we talked about system improvements. One of the things that we hear the most with these type of situations happen is citizens wanting to get accurate information as soon as possible and as updated as possible. And when you have an event this large, have we learned anything about how we can help get information out to, when we have this many people affected, how we can partner to get information out accurately and as soon as possible and to more people?
Yeah, they, well, oh, go ahead, Mary.
Yeah, so again, our outage map is the primary area we point people to. In this particular event, we had some challenges with it that normally isn't the case. We've been working diligently to fix what caused those problems, because we need customers to be able to rely on our outage map. We're also very active from the emergency coordination center in coordinating social media. So if you're not subscribed to our Facebook page, you should. We also have an Instagram page and a Twitter page. Just a moment.
Mary, why don't you go ahead and close the presentation, so folks can see you. Oh, okay, something might have happened there. So I'll just jump in and add real quick.
Sorry, I swallowed wrong. Okay, I will stop sharing.
Yeah, go ahead. Did you have more to say, Mary?
Okay, yeah, and I was just going to say that we're very active with social media during any storm event. And so if you subscribe to, I, not our X page now, not Twitter, but our Facebook, the X page, we are giving information, we give information to the media on a regular basis. So again, our outage map, if you don't have that on your phone, I recommend that you do that. So I don't know if that helps.
Thank you. Yeah, clarifying the, the areas that may have occurred with the outage map is really helpful to understand how this situation may have been different than typical.
Yeah, the outage map, as a former mayor myself, I can tell you, life changed dramatically better when, when PSE produced the outage map, and a lot less phone calls, and you could direct people to that. It was not only frustrating for, I know, most of our customers and communities, but for us too, that we were having a lot of bugs and glitches with that. So it's especially during one of our biggest storms that we've experienced in decades. But, but otherwise, as Mary said, we're just, we're pushing that on multiple layers in the communities. And I probably should have put a note on the emails I send out to all you folks too, to say, please distribute these in the communities, because we're not aware of all the different, you know, everything from your next door to your little neighborhood association, wherever that US council members or city staff can help kind of push that out into the community and get that information out there. And that's super helpful for us, and I know that's why I'm giving that information out to all the council members and mayors, and just trying to do it at least four times a day to keep that information going out there. Because the communication is the biggest piece of the frustration, right? Because you have people, whether it's a home or a restaurant, trying to determine, do I empty my fridge, or is the power coming on in an hour? You know, they're trying to make plans and decisions for their life. So we fully appreciate the need for that, that good communication, the constant communication.
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you, and again, just thank you for the work. I know part of getting back on track with the grid was getting some additional wire in, getting some transformers in, that kind of stuff. Where are, where are you sourcing those from? Are they from in the US, or are they from out of the US?
Mary, you'd know that better than I would, I think.
And actually, I don't, because I'm not with our purchasing, our materials purchasing. So I don't know. I think that they have several avenues for getting those things. And in the bomb cyclone, even with how big it was, we kept asking and verifying from the ECC, are we still okay on materials? And we were throughout that entire event. So we're, well, we're well-prepared with the amount of material we have. We do understand some of the situations with transformers, and we do have plans in place so that we can get them if needed.
Okay, great. I just wanted to know if we were going to be impacted by tariffs in future events?
Yeah.
Potentially not be able to either get things in, or it's going to cost us a lot more.
Yeah, we certainly could be impacted by the...
Good question.
You know, if there were Canadian tariffs on energy, or on electricity and gas, both of which we get some of that from Canada. In fact, as some of you may know, Canada, I mean, PSE is owned by a Canadian, basically pension fund. It's sort of police, police and teachers, or public servants and teachers' pension fund.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And it's, and what I have known about hearing some of this is, two things, is one, we get them from diverse sources, but I'll check into that and get back to you if I can get an answer. And secondly, though, what the word I did have is, is we were quite relieved that we had most of that supply on hand. And so we didn't, I didn't hear any stories that we were suddenly finding ourselves with a lack of transformers or the material that we needed to get everything tipped up again.
Thank you very much. Appreciate, appreciate the time, appreciate the presentation, Mary and Matt. Really appreciate it. Pass on my appreciation, your CEO, Kip, reached out during the height of that and to see if we needed anything, and I really appreciate that. And I'd like to point out that city staff really went above and beyond. We opened up City Hall to the community for warming, charging stations, coffee, and it was really appreciated for people and children, and people to be able to work and charge their devices and stuff, so appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. And in some cases, where City Halls were doing that, we were also trying to make folks available to come and be in those warming centers and address questions and frustrations from the public. So if that occurs in the future, don't hesitate to ping me and let me know.
Thank you. Hope it doesn't.
Yeah, all right. Thank you again for having us.
Thank you very much. Public comments. Okay, public comments. So when I call your name, please come to the microphone and state whether you live in the city limits, and you'll have three minutes. Holly Munchell.
Got the order a little bit rearranged. Okay, I'm Holly Munchell. I do live within the city limits, and I'm here today to share a letter that North Shore Council PTSA will be sending to our legislature to encourage additional school funding. And we want to also express appreciation for the efforts you've made towards us, better funding for North Shore School District. In the interest of time, I'm not going to read the whole thing, I'm just going to expert a couple key excerpts that I think are important. "We call on you to fulfill your duty to fully fund K-12 public education as mandated by our state constitution..." by our state constitution, which declares it is the paramount duty of the state to make ample provision for the education of all children residing within its borders. Insufficient state funding threatens our ability to deliver on this fundamental commitment, and the uncertainty surrounding national funding poses a significant risk to the stability and continuity of our schools. North Shore School District has been facing historic budget challenges, projecting to cut over $52 million, which is over 11% of its budget, despite an alone enrollment decrease of less than 1% over the last three years. Thirty percent of our local levy dollars go to fund special education services and 10% to support multilingual learners. Materials, supplies, and operating costs funding is underfunded by over $1 million." "In order to deliver on legally mandated instruction, many enrichment activities previously funded by our levies have been reduced or cut, including but not limited to elementary band and orchestra activity buses, critical to providing extra support and access for disadvantaged students and middle school sports reductions. Chronic underfunding ripples through our community with far-reaching consequences. Students lack access to reasonable class sizes, mental health services, and safe schools. Educators face burnout due to inadequate compensation, support, and training. Our community is losing trust in public education's promise of equity and excellence. Schools are critical to building thriving communities, and investing in them directly supports our shared goals of equity and well-being. As you convene this legislative session, we urge you to prioritize immediate and decisive actions to fully fund public education." And I will give you a full copy, as well as a little info sheet that North Shore School District has put together to explain their funding gaps.
Thank you. Allison Farmer.
Hi, Allison Farmer, outside the city limits. I'll start off saying I am in favor of the creative district, but that's not why I'm here. I'm actually here to talk about the DA public hearing, I think it's business item 11. The Planning Commission asked Main Street to come back with 10% affordable. This is kind of what happened at the public hearing, something Main Street promised and the city badly needs. There was, they were not told they could not ask for any amendments and affordability in the scope of the Planning Commission's role. If this city council had not avoided adopting an affordable, inclusive housing policy for years, they would not have even had to be asked. They also asked for a more accurate illustration showing the second row of townhomes. I feel responsible for that one. This is not them designing development, but I have since been told that the permitting process sorts all that out. The public are not involved in the permitting process, however, and having such inaccurate and visual information, the only point the public are involved is eroding trust. So I feel it's very important that the initial drawing is representational or not conceptual. Main Street then walked away from the deal, unjustly blaming the Planning Commission. There have been people at fault here, but none of them are the Planning Commissioners. They were even within their timeframe proposed to add predictability for developers, and it's a pity you cannot add construction predictability for the city's benefit. The real root of all this sorry saga was this council disregarding the Planning Commission's recommendation not to pursue the co-amendment for Old Town and ignoring public outcry to grant it. Main Street were not at their DA hearing. We cannot even be sure the requests were passed on to them, as more affordable was asked for in the draft DA stage, and that was not passed on to them. During discussions, whenever a Planning Commissioner asked a question, the city manager, who was sitting in the audience, kept jumping up in frustration to answer. It was totally irregular. The mayor was sitting next to him. This ordinance was instigated by the mayor after Main Street walked away and a dodgy handshake deal fell to bits. There are two men running this country abusing power and procedure to get exactly what they want and acting in vengeance when they don't. We don't need it here. Either bring back the DA public hearings to the city council, or let the Planning Commission carry on caring, unencumbered. Let them feel free to come to you with any concerns. Let them continue to acknowledge community engagement and do what's best for Woodinville's residents and its future. This audience, this ordinance is unfair, uncalled-for, disrespectful, reprimand that will just create frustration, remove full oversight of DAs, and restrict public engagement. Thank you.
Steve Swanson.
Steve Swanson, yep. I'm a resident, and I live right next door at District Flats. And face this way, so I look in at your meetings. Last spring, I was at my desk working when I saw a city worker with a big backpack on applying chemicals to the mulching area, which I later found out was Roundup. Workers, especially the, the Woodinville city workers, are the ones most exposed to Roundup during its application. So after it was put on, minutes later, I saw an elderly lady walk her little white dog right across the mulch where it, well, where it was put down. Hundreds of dogs use this, this area around here and walk on that mulch. So I contacted Brian, Brian Meyer, and set up a meeting with Asha, excuse me if I'm not addressing you properly, that resulted in stakes around the mulch where the, where it's applied. A couple of those stakes may still be up. They left them up. I then spoke with the managers at District Flats and Wooden Creek to notify the pet owners that, that, you know, to stay off and that there's going to be warnings. Roundup is a known carcinogen to humans and pets. I've lost a, a dog at age five that was likely from lawn chemicals. And in 2021, I was diagnosed with lymphoma from, I'm saying, you know, hazardous things out in the environment. And obviously, I beat it. As of February 2025, there have been 160,000 lawsuits against Bayer and Monsanto with some $11 billion awarded. So Roundup is not to be taken lightly. I did some research to alternatives to Roundup and found that the North Shore School District uses a product called Vinegrine, which is from vinegar. Then, further, that is a part of what's called the Integrated Pest Management System, which the North Shore School District has, Seattle School District has. I've got information on the program here that I will leave, and I've got information right from the webpage of the North Shore School District on their pest management program.
Thank you. I know that one of our business items, agenda, staff report, is we're looking into alternatives for Roundup, and I don't know where we're at on that, but we are looking into an alternative.
Awesome, yeah. I, I did some research on wholesale suppliers, and so it's, it's available.
Thank you. Carol Hook.
Good evening, Carol Hook. I'm here representing the Woodinville Arts Alliance. I am not in the city limits. I am here, obviously, with the name of Woodinville Arts Alliance. I am here to support the creative district and just want to help people understand the importance of art in our, in our lives and in our worlds. I started the Art Alliance in 2017 because I felt there was a need in Woodinville to have more public art. It's actually been in our mission statement to see more physical art in and around Woodinville. And there's so many positive impacts art can have in your community. The arts matter because they allow us to express ourselves and illustrate the world around us in a different light, helping us to gain and understanding, build communities, and give hope. The arts matter because they help us understand how we matter in a community. Arts can communicate information, shape our everyday lives, make a social statement, and be enjoyed for the aesthetic beauty. Art has proven, there's been studies that help people feel connected to their community because they're enjoying the art together within the city. And there's also been, art has also been linked to increased civic engagement, a deeper understanding of others, and building human, social, and community capital. And I can't remember what year it was, but I know Woodinville, the city of Woodinville did a survey and asked, what do you want to see in Woodinville? And I remember, I don't know where we were, but it said art was very high up on that list. So your own people in Woodinville have spoken in a survey that they want to see more art. So I would love to see the creative district happen, and as the president of Woodinville Arts Alliance, would love to support it in any way that I can and our, our group can. So anyway, thank you so much for giving me the time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I can't make out the next name. I think it starts with E. Is it Chang? Did I get that right? Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry, I wrote really small. I should have written a little bit bigger. Hello, I'm Alina Chang. I'm here on behalf of the Woodinville Teen Arts Alliance in support of the creative district. So good evening, everyone, and thank you for listening to me speak. First of all, I'd like to talk about the impact that a creative district could have on the economy. If you consider Edmonds, they established a creative district a few years ago, and since then, they've had around, around $19 million in local revenue. They've also created over 400 full-time jobs in the community. So clearly, there are some very good economic impacts that this could have on our community. In addition, it could increase our cultural diversity here, and that is also, again, very beneficial for the community. Finally, it would have very deep impacts on our group, the Woodinville Teen Arts Alliance and the Woodinville Arts Alliance, and just how we impact the community. We recently did a collaboration with Brittany Parks where we interacted with elders and we heard their stories, and we made pieces of art based on their stories and displayed those pieces of art in, in art show. During Winter Fest, we also had this other kind of project where we bought crafting supplies and we put them on a table and we helped kids make ornaments out of them. So a creative district would allow us to continue to just have these artistic interactions with our community, and it would just be very beneficial for us in that way. So to sum it up, there would be a lot of economic, cultural, and artistic benefits for this community because of the creative district. So thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you. Ahmad Amiri.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Ahmad Amiri, and I have had the privilege of being residents of Woodinville for 35 years. I have spoken to staff over the years and before commissions and you councilmembers on a multiple occasions, urging reevaluation of the city restriction transportation standard for private roads. As I have previously mentioned, Woodinville private road standards are among the most rigid in a state, and it remains unclear why there is no allowance for flexibility in this regard. I have reviewed the upcoming agenda and Planning Commission's proposed work plan for 2025. I see that the commission will already be addressing middle housing and unit lot subdivision standards. If the, if the private road standards are not included in this process, homeowners will lose out on valuable opportunities for development, further limiting the potential for new housing in Woodinville. Given this consideration, I respectfully ask the council once again to address the city private road standards and add this issue to Planning Commission's work plan, which I think it has been doing this, and you're being very positive about it. This would complement the work already underway and likely result in minimal additional efforts for staff and the commissioners. Most importantly, revising this standard would benefit Woodinville homeowners and help provide much-needed housing stock for our community. I really appreciate and I'm privileged to be in front of you and your effort for the city of Woodinville. You work hard, and thank you for also getting fantastic staff. I'm getting to believe them, and I used to not, but I'm getting to believe in them, that you really had a, you've been working hard on that, and I appreciate that. Oh, I can say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Hendricks-McAdams.
Hello. My name is Heather Hendricks-McAdams, and there are two houses between me and Woodinville City Limits. The council has heard me speak up here on more than one occasion, usually representing the small but mighty nonprofit business that I help lead. But tonight, I'm here simply as a community member who deeply cares about Woodinville's future. I am here to urge you to approve the resolution in support of the formation of a creative district in Woodinville. This initiative aligns with our city's long-term economic development goals and will bring significant cultural, social, and economic benefits to our community. More importantly, it will enhance, not displace, our existing local character and community diversity. Some people have made claims that a creative district should be led only by residents who live in city limits. That's exclusionary and elitist. Creative districts are, as laid out by Washington State law, are meant to support a broad community. The funding is not intended to only benefit people in city limits. Woodinville does not exist in a bubble. There are about 14,000 people living within city limits and another 24,000 with a Woodinville postal address who contribute to this economy, shop at our businesses, and lend their creative talents to making this a thriving community. They too have a stake in this city's future. The Creative Industries Policy and Evidence Center emphasizes that creative investment fosters inclusive economic development. A study in the Journal of Urban Affairs found that artist communities enhance cultural diversity and social cohesion, attracting a mix of artists, entrepreneurs, and small business owners who contribute fresh ideas and economic vitality. Furthermore, the National Endowment for the Arts found that the fine arts and community-driven initiatives encourage long-term stability and inclusivity. This is precisely the type of growth we need and want for Woodinville, a sustainable, community-led creative district that uplifts local artists and business without forcing out existing residents. It's about making a space for artists who are already here but don't have a gathering space. This initiative is not only about the arts, it's about economic development. Studies have consistently shown that creative industries stimulate local economies and increase foot traffic. Woodinville has the opportunity to build on this success while preserving our identity. Finally, I want to address concerns about governance. The administration of the creative district by the Woodinville Arts Alliance is entirely appropriate. Many of the board members of WAA have been residents of the city of Woodinville or the broader area for years and even decades, demonstrating their deep investment in the community and its success. Nonprofits are the standard model for managing creative districts because they ensure transparency and equitable distribution of funds. Approving this resolution is an investment in Woodinville's future, one that will support local business, attract cultural tourism, and make our city an even better place to live. I urge you to stand with us in supporting this vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Clara McAdams.
Hello. My name is Clara, and I'm 14 years old. I moved to Woodinville four years ago during the pandemic, and I'm here to share why I think that having a creative district would improve the community, especially for kids and teenagers like myself. Right now, Woodinville is a great place to live, but it's hard to find easily accessible, quality creative spaces in the city. but it's hard to find easily accessible, quality creative spaces in the city. A Creative District would change that. Teens could have a more convenient place to explore art, music, theater, things that encourage us to think outside the box and challenge ourselves. Creativity isn't just about drawing or painting. It teaches us to solve problems, share our ideas, and see the world differently. One of the things I would appreciate most is a space where we can actually do things, not just look at them, a place with classes, interactive workshops, performances, shopping opportunities, and more. Having a space to learn, grow, and enhance our skills is exactly what youth need to feel more confident and be more competent entering the next stages of our life. But the reason I most support the Creative District is for the community. The ability to connect with peers in a positive creative environment is so meaningful, and it's something I don't see enough opportunities for in Woodinville. Seeing and appreciating local talent, participating in events, being inspired by the people around me, growing as a person, this is what the arts bring to my life. Right now, we don't really have a great gathering place where young people can experience this. A Creative District in Woodinville would offer a fun, productive setting where we could expand our knowledge and connect with our community in a whole new way. It would make Woodinville more exciting and give teens something to look forward to. I hope you will approve the resolution to support the Creative District because it would mean so much to youth like me, who want to explore opportunities to express our creativity. Thank you.
Thank you. Ansley McAdams.
Hello, my name is Ansley. I moved just outside of Woodinville four years ago. Woodinville is an amazing place, but one thing I've noticed is there aren't many places for kids like me to hang out and be creative and experience new things. Being creative is extremely important to me. It helps me develop valuable life skills in a fun, engaging way. It develops my interest in learning things such as communication and thinking outside the box. A Creative District in Woodinville would give kids and families like me a place to explore different kinds of creativity and learn from each other. I would love to have a place to go with my family and friends where we can see interesting things, shop for unique gifts, and experience different ideas, foods, and cultures. Right now, there aren't many spaces like that nearby. A Creative District would bring more fun, exciting, and inspiring things for kids and families to do together. Please, support the Creative District. It would mean so much to people, including me, who want more chances to be around the Creative District and try new things and connect with our community in new ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Ellerton.
Good evening, my name is Kimberly Ellerton. I am a Woodinville resident of seventeen years, and I'm also here as the executive director of the Woodinville Chamber, though I'm not sure how I'm going to follow that. And I wanted to talk about just two things briefly. One is, I wanted to let you all know that next Tuesday, February eleventh, is Chamber Day in Olympia, and so myself and other chamber members will be going to Olympia to advocate for Woodinville businesses on their behalf. We have appointments with Representative Dewar and Senator Stanford. I'd love to send our legislative priorities to the city council to review, and if you're interested in meeting or providing any feedback before my meetings with those representatives, I'd be happy to meet with any of you, as well as you. I also am here to support the formation of the Woodinville Creative District. I did share a letter a few weeks ago in January that I sent to all of you that went into greater detail about why I think a Creative District would support tourism, economic impact, attracting creative businesses, and so much more. But I think our Teen Arts Alliance representatives, and Carol and Heather, have already done such an incredible job. So I just want to reiterate a thank you to Tori Edwards, who has led the Creative District Task Force. Thank you to Jared Hill for the city's support. I'm so glad that the Chamber has been able to be a part of the Creative District Task Force over this past year. It's given a voice to business to talk about how business and creativity come together. And I just want to, again, thank you for considering and hope that you'll pass the resolution tonight.
Thank you. Tori Edwards, you're queued up.
I'm Tori Edwards, and I live in unincorporated Woodinville. I'm here to talk kind of in a more broader sense about the Creative District. My family moved to the area over ten years ago in order to build a side dwelling for my parents, my mom and dad and grandma, four generations on one property. We lived there that way for many years before we lost my dad to COVID in March of 2020 and my grandma in March of 2021. In 2022, my mother-in-law's house burnt down, and then she moved in with us. Quite a lot of change in a short time. Two of the last memories I have from my dad are his handwriting on a document saying, "Circumstances change," and some conversations we had around a sign on my mantle which says, "Together is a wonderful place to be." It has been understandably hard to figure out our family culture through all these shifts. Some things remain consistent, mostly good, grace, humor, family meetings, and some not so good, like getting snippy with each other. Woodinville has also been going through a significant amount of change lately. We are also trying to figure out our community culture through these shifts. As a founding officer of the Woodinville Arts Alliance and current president of the Woodinville Farmers Market, I'm especially invested in our community and its arts, culture, and small businesses, so it felt natural to take part in the Creative District formation team. As I've been talking to the public, I was especially struck by the story of Tara Jennings, who owns an art studio, gallery, and supply shop. She's had to move multiple times in the last few years as development has occurred or prices have changed, et cetera. She most recently landed in a section on the north side of East Trail that we hope to include in Creative District, precisely because it seems to be friendly to small businesses. I believe a Creative District can help her and other creatives and small businesses like her. I also believe that the Creative District can act as a focal point or a hub as we do the collective work of finding our community thread, our common stories, weaving the fabric of our community's future to tell the story of who Woodinville is. We have many wonderful organizations, some you've heard from, who do good work, and frankly, probably with insufficient recognition. And we have many residents with caring and compassionate hearts who look out for their neighbors in hard times, such as power outages, snowy days, or in my case, right now, when I have no bathrooms in my home. This is some part of our culture. I hope, together with the Creative District as a partner, we can find even more clarity around our culture in Woodinville and tell our story. And together, we can make Woodinville a wonderful place to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Monahan.
Hello, I'm Nicole Monahan, and I am in support of the Creative District. From a business standpoint, I'm a small business owner in the community. Oh, I forgot to say, I am two blocks from the city limits. So I'm a small business owner in Woodinville. I'm a mom of three, two of which have already moved out of the house, and I'm the vice president for the Woodinville Arts Alliance. And so I moved to Woodinville sixteen years ago, seventeen years ago, and there was really, I didn't see any culture here, no culture, no art, but it was here, just pieced around. There was not a lot of support for it, and there was a lot of artists, but no support. And I was one of the founding members of the Woodinville Arts Alliance solely because I wanted to bring more arts in for my kids and to make this more of a cultural center. And I feel like, over the years, we've done a lot to do that. And I'm working with the Teen Arts Alliance to bring it into the youth as well. And one thing, everybody who's talked has brought up such good points, I won't say those again, but from another standpoint to think about, we have these different entities here, right? But we don't have a support unit. So having a Creative District would help us all band together and partner up and be able to get larger funding from the state. We come to you guys for grants all the time, and you're so gracious, and you give us grants, but this would enter even bigger grants from, from the state and help us band together and partner up and have a larger force to be able to bring all of this to the community, to make our community stronger through culture and small business. We have a lot of chains here, and our small businesses are trying to thrive, but if we get together and partner up and have this Creative District where we can say, "Come to Woodinville, this is a great place to come. We've got our wineries, but we've also got all these excellent small businesses, and come visit them." And what happens when people start seeing that? Then other small businesses say, "I want to be a part of that," and they move in. And our, our community just keeps getting stronger and stronger by the partnerships that we build. So, thank you.
Thank you. David Farkas.
Hello, I'm Dave Farkas, and I live in Lake Forest Park. I'm here to support the Creative District. Several years ago, my wife and I discovered Woodinville. In particular, we're drawn to it because of the arts and cultural offerings. We attend theater, cultural events, we dine in Woodinville, we do some shopping in Woodinville. So Woodinville's become kind of important to us because of the arts offerings. And we really support the creation of the Creative District because it will help keep arts and culture strong and flourishing in your wonderful city. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley Pearson.
Good evening. I'm here in support of the Creative District, surprise. I'm not going to repeat every, all the amazing things that everybody else has said, and those are...
Just for the record, do you live in the city limits?
Oh, I'm sorry, I live outside the city limits. I grew up in Woodinville.
Thank you.
And live in the area, yeah, but not in the city limits. I just, one of the reasons I support the Creative District is I think that it draws together all the disparate pieces of all the amazing things that are going on in the community already. Everything from the Chamber's concert series to the Arts Alliance, art shows. If you haven't had a chance to go to one of those, they're amazing. The garden community, their garden show, there's so many amazing creative people that are here in the city of Woodinville. And a Creative District gives that a foundation. It gives it a recognition for the community that is already here, and I would love to see that continue to thrive. It's going to make Woodinville an even more amazing place. We want people to come here. I work in the city of Woodinville. I shop in the city of Woodinville. I spend a lot of my time here, even though I don't live here. I spend so much of my time here. And having grown up in this city, I would love to see it continue to grow in a sustainable, healthy, beautiful way. And I think it's on the right track, and I think that a Creative District would continue that trend. I think it would just draw more people here to enjoy what we have here. So I speak in support of the Creative District. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent calendar.
I move to consent. I move to accept the consent calendar is written.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries, thank you. First business item, number six, approval of resolution number six-five-five supporting the formation of Washington State Arts Commission Certified Creative District. Mr. Hill.
All right, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Jared Hill, and I will be presenting resolution number six-five-five to support the Woodinville Arts Alliance in applying to become a Washington State Creative District. So what is a Creative District? I know you received a presentation on this recently, but as a refresher, it is a Washington State Arts Commission, or Arts-WoA, program to help communities turn cultural activities into economic growth. A Creative District is geographically defined, is a geographically defined area of cultural and economic activity. It's the heart of a community, a fun place to live, work, and visit, and a place for people to gather to enjoy their community's arts, culture, and heritage. It is, it is designed to support local businesses, creative artists, build economic vitality, and promote cross-collaboration between different sectors. There are over a dozen Creative Districts across the state, and locally, Councilmember Sarah Perry challenged all third district cities to explore achieving this certification. Last year, the city received a grant from the Port of Seattle to explore what a city can do to support its creative economy and help advance our economic development plan. We received recommendations on affordable retail space, community meeting areas, and other policy recommendations that were included in the SCJ presentation last month. Additionally, we learned that there, that the community is looking for increased programming in arts and culture and having a centralized place to go and learn about things that are happening here in Woodinville. It helped us address the question of, "I came to Woodinville to go wine tasting, and now what?" There are many times we go out to different organizations, asking them to support our projects, but for this, it is really asking how we can support them. As the host city, we are tasked with formally recognizing what organization is going to be running the Creative District and are encouraged to work closely with the entity as a key stakeholder in the arts and culture space. Similar to how we work closely with the Chamber of Commerce for matters related to business, to the business community or Woodinville Wine Country for the needs of the taste, of tasting rooms and breweries. Council can also consider passing a resolution to support their application, which the Arts Alliance can include in their packet and help their chances at receiving the certification. The city does not have financial or policy commitment in the Creative District, but has a vested interest in seeing it excel. The Arts Commission has some great resources available to Creative Districts. Upon certification, they would receive a $10,000 grant to help get programming up and running and be eligible to apply for additional grants in the future, as well as trading and additional resources. We have so many great arts and cultural resources here in the city, and a Creative District will provide the tools to promote these small businesses and events to support our economy here in Woodinville. Just some brief history here on the steps that we've taken to get here. We've been working on this for quite some time, since summer 2023, and I can't thank the volunteers enough from our creative business community who have been coming together to work towards this goal. Following tonight's meeting, they hope to submit an application for certification in the next month or so. Tori Edwards has been our fearless leader of a group of about twenty-two team members to discuss this project, and we have had the chance to collaborate and discuss the future and preservation of arts and culture in Woodinville. The team has done extensive public outreach and spoken to dozens of different groups about what that means. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and if there are none, you can see there is a motion available for your consideration on the screen.
Councilmember Evans.
Great, thank you. So just in full transparency, I joined the Board of the Woodinville Arts Alliance in January of this year for a whole lot of reasons. And after seeking advice from staff and council, we determined this was not a remote interest situation because there's no city and Woodinville Arts Alliance contract at state. So a simple, it's simply a resolution of support and endorsement. And so I wanted to take the time to speak about this because we have some absolutely amazing people who give and give and give to our community. And I was really disheartened over the weekend to see that blame, disinformation, and all sorts of fear tactics were being used. Carol Hook started this with a few other people who were here today back in 2017. That is years of giving to our community. They started a youth arts portion of this. That is years of giving to kids who live in and around Woodinville, kids who go to school with our kids. I find it really, really awful to think that we would exclude people from giving back to our city simply because they don't have an address that's within the city limits. We allow the Chamber of Commerce to have anyone be a part of the Chamber of Commerce. They don't even have to have a business here. We've never, ever made a deal about that. We, you know, allow anybody to come in and open a business here. It doesn't matter where they live. I don't know why we would be putting up exclusionary boundaries for people who literally give and give. They don't, a lot of them don't get any compensation from it. They just do it because of a love of community. And so I just want to say, I fully support this. I know how much time and effort has gone into getting us to this place. Tori has put in so, so, so many hours, along with many others in this room, to come up with a proposal that will do nothing but benefit Woodinville. When we had the For the Love of Cities presentation back in October, one of the keys that was critical to building a vibrant, thriving community was having something based in the arts that was... was having something based in the arts that was exciting and pulled people in and gave them a reason to come, to stay, and to hang out. That reason is not going to be targeted as much as we love their sales tax. It's going to be something they can't find anywhere else. And so, again, I fully support this, I fully support the work that has gone into this, and I cannot say thank you enough to all the volunteers in the city and outside the city limits who love Woodenville and who have done nothing but give.
Councilmember Art.
Thank you. I have been sitting in on the Creative District Steering Committee meetings for just over a year now, and it has been a truly enjoyable process. And I can say that one of the things that they have done extremely well and extremely extensively is community input and stakeholder meetings with all the various parts of our community. We do lots of surveys as the government, we do lots of community buy-in processes, and the Creative Districts by far has been the most extensive that I have participated in. At our last meeting, we were going through the application materials before the final application. And just the list of community events that they have attended, tabling opportunities, survey respondents, and individual stakeholder meetings that they have engaged in throughout this process was staggering. The number of hours, of volunteer hours that represented was enormous. And I think that the true benefit of all of those hours spent out interacting with our community is that they have a very good idea of what our community is asking for, what our community needs in terms of support for community creativity to flourish. And not just creativity, but businesses that support that creative response. So I am very happy to support the Creative District and make this resolution. A lot of work, a lot of community engagement has gone into this, and this is just one step that they need in a very detailed and very lengthy process with the state to get certified. And I'm encouraged to see them moving closer to that point of submission.
Councilmember Edwards.
And with that, I move that the City Council approve resolution number 655, supporting the formation of a Washington State Creative District administered by the Woodenville Arts Alliance.
Seconded.
I have a motion of second. Councilmember Edwards, you have the floor.
Absolutely. There's so many great things and opportunities with this being passed here. We talked about economic opportunities, but the most important thing is this is something that can bring our community together here. We've talked about how it can impact the youth. There's so many opportunities for people to recreation, build relationships. But the big thing about this is, this is just the start. This step will allow us to have so many more opportunities here in Woodenville and so many leaders within the community to bring these opportunities to Woodenville. So as I am in support of passing this here today, I believe this is just the start, and we need to continue to support the arts in our community, building those relationships for all people in Woodenville, whether they be the youth, whether they be elderly people, all the, all the people here who live and don't live in Woodenville, but enjoy their time here. It's about building our community and building those relationships so it can all grow and make the city a place that we all love and can enjoy.
Council, Councilmember Bess Campbell.
So here's the issue that I have. In my neighborhood, no one's ever heard of the Arts District. All this outreach maybe hasn't trickled into certain neighborhoods of Woodenville. This has been a process that was created outside of these council chambers, and it's been brought to us. But a lot of these decisions that are going to be made by this Arts District are going to impact the city of Woodenville. Now, I am not elected to represent Bothell, I'm not representing Kirkland. By the nature of the city boundaries, I am only allowed to represent the city of Woodenville. My only issue with this Arts District is that there needs to be, I think, more people in the city of Woodenville on the board. We need to be able to have people who have skin in the game, who live here. And while we appreciate all of the creative people who come to Woodenville, thank you very much, I appreciate that I also am elected to represent the people of Woodenville. And all the voices I've heard tonight are from outside of city limits. So I would like to move to amend the main motion to table this until we have assurances or a board makeup that includes residents from city limits.
Do I hear a second? Motion fails, amendment fails due to lack of second. Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Yeah, I wanted to speak directly to that. One of the reasons that it may not have gotten a lot of play is because the district that we are talking about, Creative, does not currently have a lot of residents within it. One of the things I want to say about this is it will make Woodenville better. If people are willing to go to Austin and look at paint thrown on a wall, I believe that people will be coming to Woodenville to actually see, visualize, and interact with whatever we put together with our Arts District. Arts are a very important piece of any community. It holds history, it holds culture, it holds creativity in its hand. It is the only thing that we speak of as humans, as something that can be priceless. Oftentimes, we don't even put life on that level like we should, but we do talk about art as being something priceless and what it represents. I would love to see that in our community and have it grow as a priceless piece of our community. Representing everyone, it'll come to represent everyone by being a piece of art for people to apply to it. And that's all I have to say.
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. Jared, do you happen to have a list of all the places where the, there was outreach done?
I do, I don't have it included in my presentation. Would it be possible to send it as a follow-up after the meeting?
That would be amazing, because I know that they were at, for example, Celebrate Woodenville, where, you know, thousands and thousands and thousands of people were, and they were talking to people. I, I know that they were at Winterfest. I know that they've gone to various areas to do outreach in, in different districts. And so I, I find it, hmm, I find it a little disingenuous to say that this is done in secret. I feel like they've done more for outreach than just about any other initiative that I've seen recently. And I know that it was very intentional to do that outreach. And, you know, I don't know why this is being portrayed as something done in secret. I mean, we have all sorts of districts all over the state. This was created to make Washington State better, and we get to take advantage of this program as residents of Washington State to make our city better. And I really find it perplexing that we would have any sort of residency when these are people who are literally putting all of their time and energy into making Woodenville better, regardless of where they live. I also think that, you know, a district can really take off. I think of the Pearl District down in Portland. I don't know if any of you have been there. It's a well-known district. It's a well-known district because of the work and effort that people put into it and to being really intentional about making it a place that draws people in, making it a place that's walkable, that's interesting, that, you know, people drive or fly to Portland for. I would love that for us here in Woodenville as well. And the only way that's going to happen is by getting that state funding and then having the committed people behind the scenes who are giving and donating their time, their talents, their connections, their efforts. I mean, the art community is very connected. And once they hear that there is a space here in Woodenville, I think it's going to become, I don't know, a magnet to attract some really, some more really incredible people. We already have a number of them, I think this will just increase it even more. So, again, I fully support this.
I'd like to weigh in on that a little bit. So this, this has been going on for a little over two years, I think, the process. So anybody could have asked questions, particularly if you're a council member, on what's this all about, you could have attended meetings. This is not, this has been public meetings, or not public meetings, but they've been held publicly available to people to attend. So the secretive thing, I, I don't quite understand. Washington State's Arts Commission designates areas aimed at fostering economic development through arts and culture, grow creative industries, attract tourism, boost local economies, and enhance community identity. That sounds like a lot of something that we ought to do. This supports local artists, enhances community engagement, helps cities retain creative talent, and create cultural, cultural hubs, encourages economic growth, makes us eligible for state grants, fits our 20-year economic development plan, leverages our wine industry, social benefits for Woodenville, enhances walkability and links the city, generates jobs, strengthens community pride, and again, it makes us eligible for grant funding to add arts and culture to our community. So if you're, I think, if, if you're for arts and culture, you should be for this. If you're for jobs and local businesses, you, you for this. If you're for beautifying the city and, and connecting our city, you should be for this. I can't even think of one reason why anybody would be against this. I fully support this, this goes in with our, our vision of beautifying and connecting our downtown and encouraging economic growth and supporting small businesses. So I fully support this.
Councilmember Bess Campbell.
So I think that I need to speak into my microphone a little bit more. I support arts, thank you very much. This isn't fear, I'm merely asking a question, why aren't there Woodenville residents in here advocating for this? It tells me that they don't know. Not everybody goes to concerts, not everybody goes to these different events. It's not for lack of trying, but people go to different events just based on where they are in life. So my asking for a simple, can we get Woodenville residents on the board is not me being against the Artist District, it's me making sure that this Artist District is including input from all parts of Woodenville, not outside, not inside, but all. It's called synergy, and if we don't have representation from inside, how can we get the community to support a project when they don't feel that they have a say? So for the last time, I will say it again, lest someone else say it. Arts are good, I want an Arts District. I also want to make sure that we have buy-in and in the ability for people who live here to voice their concerns and voice what they want as well. So no, there's no secrecy, there's no anti-this. Let me be clear, for the fifth time, and speak into my microphone once again, I want the Artist District. I'm merely asking for just a slight bit more opportunity for the people of Woodenville and the residents who vote for us to be on the board and have their voices heard as well.
Councilmember Art.
Just to clarify, we heard from at least two individuals tonight who are Woodenville residents, who have been either on the Steering Committee for the Creative Arts District. That would be Kimberly Ellertson, Woodenville resident, part of the Steering Committee, and our own Councilmember Evans, who just said that she is on the board for the Woodenville Arts Alliance, also a resident of our city, definitely inside the city.
Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you. I also want to highlight the efforts that this group did in terms of community outreach. Recently, here at City Council, we passed our own community engagement plan, and one of the things that we highlighted is, we wanted to reach people where they're at, to get out there and meet people, to be able to bring it to them, to be able to talk to a wide variety of people to get input. Yeah, while the board may not require residency, the outreach done did include Woodenville residents. They were all over the place, they went to the library, they went to all sorts of events, Winterfest, so many different types of places to meet people where they're at. So although there might not be as many board members who may be Woodenville residents, I think this project here is built on Woodenville residents' feedback as well. They went out there, they took the time, their own time, donated to make sure this cause had that feedback, went out in the community and really got that input. And I think we, as a city council, can learn a little bit about community outreach by based on how much time and effort in meeting people where they're at, and they did such an effective job at that, so thank you.
Just, I want to piggyback on that a little bit. So when this process started, I, I, I don't have an artistic bone in my body. I appreciate the arts and culture, but I don't have that. So it makes, made a lot of sense to reach out to the organizations that do have that expertise and that background. And that is Woodenville Arts Alliance and Woodenville Repertory and the other groups that are representative and have that, that expertise in that area. So that is, is what this is about, and it's supporting that. And I, I think it ma- makes a lot of sense. So again, I'll be supporting this and, unless anybody else says.
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. I just want to know, have we ever, in the city of Woodenville, as far as you know?
Point of order, this is the third comment.
This is my second after the motion.
Point of order is not well-taken.
Have we ever, in our city history, dictated to a nonprofit who should be on their board, that you know of?
Nothing's coming to mind at the moment, no.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I've ever heard of a city demanding residency for nonprofits that are operating within their cities. So I just want to put that out there, that seems like some pretty serious government overreach to be telling nonprofits who can and cannot be decision makers in their board.
I think that's about it. Can we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Bess Campbell?
Abstain.
Mayor Momen?
Yes.
Councilmember Art?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor? Pardon me. Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Yes. Motion passes five in favor, one abstention. Thank you. Business item number seven, Strategic Plan Progress Review. Mr. Buchanan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. You have this presentation in your packet, I'm going to go through it and add a little bit more detail as we go. I'll try, already because we're a little bit behind schedule, try to get it done a little bit faster. But one thing, as I get into this, as I was preparing this and, and putting the presentation together, one thing struck me, and, and that's that, you know, myself and certainly staff, we spend a lot of time with our heads down doing the work. We don't often get a chance to, to stop and take a breath and reflect on the amount of work that has been done. So that was, I think, a surprise here, because again, you don't get to see the cumulative nature of that. And so to go through this list and look at everything that we've got completed or ongoing or in progress, and not a whole lot of, or any, not even started, was, was kind of a, was, was a, a nice thing to see. So we'll go through that. All right, council is familiar, this of course is not the full strategic plan, this is kind of the one-page infographic that council is familiar with. We created this several years ago, and it's going through 26. Just to focus a little bit more, these are the eight different initiative areas that council identified when they created this plan, covering the built environment, social environment, and the natural environment. And I'm kind of rounding that out with the city organization, make sure we're scaling the capacity of the organization. So I'm going to go through each of these eight quickly, talk about some of the specific action items that were captured and outlined by council in those, and talk about status of those different action items and initiatives. Starting with initiative one, which is prepare planning and infrastructure to accommodate growth. We had a number of action items there, conduct an in-depth update of Woodville's comprehensive plan. Of course, we know we're in the thick of that at the moment. Establish the surface water comprehensive plan, that was completed a while back. Plan for parking capacity to meet increased residential demands in the downtown. Most recent action on that was council's action to modify the parking code to decrease the allowable parking reduction for new development in the downtown area. We anticipate, of course, although we're just very early on in the planning process there, to provide additional parking along the East Shore Corridor as that becomes a major amenity in our community. But I think, you know, depending on what, what we're talking about for downtown parking, there may be some conversation for additional public parking, especially as we see some of this legislation that is yet again proposed this session about limiting our ability to require certain parking amounts in our downtown area. That may be a future topic of conversation there. And you guys stop me if you have any questions along the way. I'm just going to try to, again, catch up on time a little bit. The last one on that one, coordinate with utility partners on infrastructure that is outside of the city's direct control. We do that regularly with Woodville Water District. That was a change in, in approach several years ago where we coordinate regularly and, and quite closely with Woodville Water District, for example, where we have started aligning our capital project schedules with theirs so that we're not paving a street and having them come back and tear it up a year later to replace water lines, for example. so that we're not paving a street and having them come back and tear it up a year later to replace water lines, for example. Uh, the big one, of course, on this list is the one-seventy-fifth Sewer Main Replacement Project. I know council's familiar with that, and the line there that is undersized, uh, serving our growing downtown. Um, the, I'm, I'm happy to report that the water dish is working on that project and moved that up actually quite a bit in their CIP plans. Um, working to try to get going in twenty-five, twenty-six on that project. And that will go, uh, the first, well, part of that project will be part of our trestle project. Um, while we've got everything tore up there, we'll include, uh, that area for upsizing and replacement. But they'll have a standalone project, perhaps even before the trestle gets under construction, uh, that will go from, uh, where, about where the East Rail Flats project is, all the way to One-Fortieth. So the real main stretch of downtown. So that will, uh, that's coming. Uh, initiative number two, which is improving mobility and road safety for all users, again, a lot of green there. Update the transportation plan and non-motorized transportation plan. Council recently completed that work. Uh, update the streetscape plan, uh, we've completed that. Uh, we have one kind of housekeeping item left to do on that, which is merging several different iterations and pieces of those, uh, streetscape plan into one cohesive one, just for ease of use and application. Uh, so that's still on our to-do list. Um, but you will see some of those, uh, th- those pieces of that new streetscape plan implemented as soon as East Rail, uh, is working on their frontage. So already some of that's under construction, uh, and we'll see that here in the coming months. Uh, advocate with regional transportation providers to understand plan and encourage future investments in transit and highway infrastructure. Um, obviously, that's been a big push on our legislative efforts, where we've, uh, been able to secure quite a few grants, uh, for related efforts there. Continuing initiative two, address sidewalk deficiencies by assigning annual spending. We have for the last few consecutive budgets, including the one we currently just started, uh, where we've started putting a chunk of money in each of those budgets specifically to a- address sidewalk deficiencies. That is exclusive, uh, and not part of the projects. When we do paving projects, for example, through intersections, we end up bringing sidewalks, uh, up to safety standards for those projects. So that, that is three ninety-one and three hundred, you've seen in previous and the current budget. That was specifically standalone sidewalk projects. Additional to that, it would be all the sidewalk work and, and, um, crosswalk work that we do as part of paving projects or larger infrastructure projects. Uh, the pavement condition survey, we completed that recently, showed significant improvement. That, I think, reflects the substantial investments the council's made for the last probably eight or nine years on that program. Uh, over a million dollars a year on paving projects, uh, which was a major push some years ago. Uh, to the point of, we're, we're looking really good on that. Um, of course, as soon as we start looking good, it's time to start the cycle all over again. So we're going to continue that program because that's, uh, a better investment to keep that maintained than have to repair and replace, uh, uh, from scratch. Implement the city's ADA plan, uh, all of our large projects, uh, our infrastructure projects, excuse me, paving projects and those sidewalk projects all further that ADA plan. Um, that's the, the root for many of those, those projects. Uh, evaluate inviting other micro-mobility service providers to serve the community. That one is actually upcoming at your future meeting. Uh, staff like by Jared has been researching that issue. I'm talking with other jurisdictions about best practices and preparing for, in your February eighteenth meeting, our next meeting, to have a conversation and get some direction from council on what they would like to do with that. So that one is in progress. Initiative three, enhance parks and recreation offerings. So use the findings outlined in the pro-plan. Uh, most of you are familiar that the pro, pro-plan included a heavy emphasis on expanding our trail connections around our community. Obviously, we're wrapping up our wood trails project is nearly complete. And our big one, our monumental one that's getting started, is our East Rail Regional Trail Project. We've obviously spent a lot of work on that, getting to the point where we are now. But now the fun stuff will get started this year, hopefully, as we get to start planning out, uh, all the amenities for that corridor. Uh, identify strategies to raise awareness about existing recreation opportunities. I think that's a constantly ongoing one, um, and I will talk about some of it here. Identify community recreation priorities and evaluate options for the provision of recreation services. This one, uh, I don't know that we exactly had it envisioned when we created this plan some years ago, but, uh, things change over time. And this one, I think, uh, we can, we can point to, we've worked with NPRSA on their Community Need Survey that they, uh, produced last year, which ultimately identified that desire to have a recreation center and, and regional aquatic, uh, center in our community, or in the re- in the district. Um, and now, obviously, our ongoing efforts to try to bring that to Woodenville, uh, I think is helping expand the, uh, recreation opportunities in, in the community. Uh, undertake a planning process for the East Rail Corridor. Again, we didn't anticipate it when we put this on the list, but we went out and got five million dollars for that. That was a huge win. Um, so, uh, we are working on getting that, that grant kicked off. And, and again, hopefully, that's, I think that will be probably one of the most exciting projects that many of us have got to work on in, in quite a while, and looking forward to that one.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, on the, on the raised grant, when, when do you anticipate the kickoff for that design process?
We're in the paperwork phase right now. We, we had a, if you recall, we had a, a slide that I can dig up and share, uh, with the council after this meeting. It had sort of kind of a tentative timeline. Unfortunately, it's always a lot of paperwork before you do the fun stuff, and we're in the paperwork phase right now. We've got the grant agreement signed, um, by all the necessary parties up and to the federal level. Um, and now it's doing just some of the paperwork with WashDOT to get authorization to actually spend the money. Um, there was obviously a little bit of concern beginning of last week about whether we were actually going to be able to do that and how soon. I think that's still a question mark, but we're still progressing as much as we can at the state level so that when that's resolved fully, we're ready to go. To answer your question, it's going to be probably late summer before we get to do the fun stuff. There's going to be a lot of work between now and then. We've got to go through the whole process of selecting a consultant, which is a lengthy process, especially because it's federal money, we've got to have state representatives involved every step there, and that makes scheduling that much more difficult. Um, but trust me, I'm chomping in the bit just as much as everybody else is on, on this one. It's been many years.
I'm not sure about that, but I'll take your word for it.
Yeah. It's been probably n- eight years since we got to do a full park project. And that's when we did the Young Park, and they're a lot of fun, so I am looking forward to that one. Um, initiative four, strengthen Woodenville's social infrastructure. Uh, this is, starting with creating additional staff capacity focused on communications and community engagement. We heard, obviously, this evening, uh, council's completed work and a committee has commit- completed work on a community engagement strategy and plan. We previously added a community engagement coordinator position, that position's only a couple of years old. Um, and coincidentally, our new community engagement coordinator started yesterday, not here this evening, but we'll make sure we get her introduced, uh, to all of you in, in, in near future. We've also, with this current budget that has just begun, uh, moved some positions around and added a management analyst, part of that being the intention that we have more bandwidth to do more community engagement. Uh, so again, we're taking small steps where we can to, to increase that capacity. Uh, expand community grant program to support events. Uh, we have increased that funding for our community grant program over previous, uh, budgets. Uh, we will likely need to expand that more to accommodate, uh, additional events, such as the winter car cruise, which I know was a topic of conversation note at our last meeting. So that's in progress. Uh, coordinate with partners to support those experiencing homelessness. Obviously, uh, have joined and partnered with KC HRA to streamline our human services funding, um, and, and channel all of our homeless, uh, relief efforts and funding towards that entity to administer those programs for us. So we're, we're, I think, doing, uh, the work that we can at this point, but that's going to be an ongoing effort. Uh, continuing with initiative four, identify priorities to, and seek to increase capacity for community policing. Uh, we've established that contract to participate in community court, which I know we have an upcoming council briefing already a year, uh, on that, to, to talk about how that's gone so far. Uh, we've provided and increased our funding through, to the Core Connect Program, which helps with some of those efforts. Um, and then I know, uh, chief, I don't think he's here this evening, but, uh, also shared that they are working on, and many of you are familiar with our previous very successful, uh, community police academies, where we had residents coming and learn about the, the tough job that we ask our police officers to do. Um, we're going to, we're working on scheduling the next session of that for later this year. So again, just making that more, uh, transparent and accessible to our community is a big part of that effort. Uh, ensure the city has organizational competency and emergency preparedness. We are in the final stages of updating our SEMP, uh, which is our Emergency Management Plan. Uh, we did, uh, with Kevin O'Neill's leadership, built out our EOC at our public works facility this year, uh, last year. Um, it's kind of neat, it's an actual, looks like an EOC. Um, so that's, that's a, a big improvement there. Um, and again, with his leadership, have helped, uh, have conducted several exercises with staff, and, and will continue, uh, doing those and ramping up, uh, the, those in the future. So that's, that will always be an ongoing in-progress effort. Uh, educate the community on the necessity of self-preparation, uh, again, with Mr. O'Neill's leadership. Have hosted regular CPR and first aid classes, some of you may have participated, and some of those in the audience may have participated in those. Uh, those are held in this room on a regular basis. I know, uh, they've been very well received, and we'll continue scheduling those, uh, to the extent possible. Uh, offer spaces, uh, for community building events that speak to diverse interests across Woodenville. We've got a number of, of accomplishments and in-progress work there. Obviously, secure the grant and working on design for the Wellmont Park stage, that will be a big one. Um, I think we talked about it brief, briefly this evening, set up that charging and warming center in City Hall when needed. That was the first time that I am aware that we've done something like that. Obviously, very well received. Uh, and of course, we're working out with, uh, NPRSA on that recreation center, um, that, uh, would theoretically have, uh, additional community use spaces, classrooms, uh, type facilities. So again, more in-progress work there. Assess housing needs and establish a housing action plan. The housing action plan itself, uh, has been completed. Now it's, uh, be- those, those policies are being incorporated into comprehensive plan that's underway, um, and largely guiding our housing action, or our comp plan, uh, update in the, the section of that comp plan and that deals with affordable housing. Um, so that's very much an ongoing and in-progress i- item as well. Initiative six, cultivate Woodenville's economic strength and resiliency. We talked about that a little bit already this evening with the Arts Alliance, uh, and that Creative District. Um, but specific action items on here, establish the Economic Development Plan, council completed that a while back. Enhance the downtown Woodenville as a destination for local regional visitors. I think that's where this, uh, Creative District, uh, can also fit in. Um, other pieces on, that we've, uh, made efforts there, police emphasis on retail theft. I know we've heard from the chief several presentations on, uh, emphasis patrols and, and the like for addressing retail theft in our downtown, to make sure that they, that shoppers and businesses remain safe and thrive in part of Woodenville's economy. Uh, we continue to support and expand events in city parks and along city right-of-way. Obviously, our partners, uh, our partnership with the Chamber on celebrate Woodenville events, uh, the summer concert series, Winter Fest, et cetera. Strengthen and broaden the draw of Woodenville's tourism industry. Uh, again, there, I think, is a Creative District, uh, work that, that Jared has helped with. Uh, continue to partner with key stakeholders, Chamber, Wine Country, Port of Seattle, King County, develop new, and new ways to enhance tourism, that's an ongoing effort always. Um, propose bicycle and scooter share pilot program. I mentioned that in a previous slide, we'll see that, uh, that council, that will come to council at its next meeting, uh, with some work that, uh, Mr. Hill has done. Align land use designations with desired future development patterns. Uh, develop and recommend zoning and code guidelines for the Creative District in Emu. Again, part of the conversation with our comp plan, uh, that is ongoing. Uh, and then continue to work with King County and other partners. So as much as trying to foster the de- the desirable land uses, it's trying to address the less desirable ones. I, in this particular case, uh, oppose the siting of the Nurse Transfer Station in Woodenville. So obviously, that's been quite a big effort from, um, council and staff, uh, alike. Uh, invest in infrastructure to support a thriving economy. Uh, we see some examples, uh, I think one that, that we'll see shortly is the, the new Grid Road on One-Thirty-third. Um, but more broadly, uh, millions and millions and millions of dollars in infrastructure investments, uh, in our current budget and our past budgets. Uh, I, I think great examples, the fifteen million dollars that we've secured for trestle, uh, and bridge replacement, and then that five million dollar raised grant, uh, for the East Rail funding, which I think will be transformational for our, our downtown. Initiative seven, care for the natural environment and ecosystems. Council, of course, has completed its work to establish a climate action plan. Um, the, when this strategic plan was drafted, none of those had been there. The housing, the economic, the climate action plan hadn't been completed. So there was placeholders in all of those to take the subsequent actions that are established in those plans. Once they were created, they've now been created, we have subsequent action steps to work towards, and those are ongoing. So for the climate action plan, that was electrification, starting work on electrification of the fleet. Obviously, we've done that, we've got another one in our current budget, uh, for our Development Services Department, uh, EV vehicle. Uh, multimodal infrastructure, such as the East Rail Corridor, obviously a huge one. Uh, we continue our commute trip reduction program efforts, that's a, a program that, uh, staff, uh, assist, um, w- with compliance there. We can provide more information if you're interested in that. It's helping large employers identify, uh, other ways for their employees to get to work. Uh, Arbor Day events, um, and then we have our salmon-friendly landscape program. Uh, we partner with Mid-Sound Fisher, I know some of you have participated in some of those events, uh, where we do some of the invasive removal and native planting. Uh, so those types of efforts all goes towards furthering our, our goals for the climate action plan. Uh, we've, of course, got another one coming up with the One-Thirty-fourth Culvert Project. Okay, identify immediate opportunities to maintain parks and open spaces in more ecologically sustainable ways. Going to the comments from, uh, one of our members of the public this evening. Uh, we have, uh, started that work and evaluated a possible alternative weed control methods, uh, that's more eco-friendly. Uh, we're, we're looking at some, at some technology solutions there, um, still evaluating that piece of it. Similarly, on all of our projects, and I, I didn't have them until it was too late to put them in this presentation, but we've got some really cool and exciting, uh, renderings of all the landscaping for like our trestle and our roundabout, and all the pollinators and the natural plants that are in there, and it's going to be really, really beautiful. So I'm excited about that, and we'll share those when we get them kind of finalized. Um, but again, moving towards a more climate, uh, friendly, uh, approach to everything we do. All right, uh, initiative seven, continue there, seek grant opportunities to place car charging stations and are supporting infrastructure on city properties. We, that's an ongoing process. We, uh, Mr. O'Neill's looked at a lot of those as they come up from different programs at both the state and federal level. There's always been some reason why it hasn't worked quite right for us, so, but we're continuing to evaluate those. So that's an ongoing, uh, status there. Uh, use the next update of a hazard mitigation plan to identify infrastructure vulnerabilities. We are in the middle of that right now, uh, Mr. O'Neill's working with King County. So we, uh, we don't have our own hazard mitigation plan, we have an annex to the broader King County Hazard Mitigation Plan. So it's kind of like the countywide plan, and then our specific little piece of that. And so we're working on our specific little piece of that that will be incorporated in the countywide plan. So that's, uh, in progress. And then we talked about, uh-
Mr. City Manager, what, what is the, what is, is something, something popped out, the biggest need, uh, in that process for Woodenville, uh, in, in the Hazard Mitigation Plan? Is there anything that- I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can you repeat the question? In, in this process, working with the county on the Hazard Mitigation Plan, is there anything that's really popped out that Woodenville needs to work on, or we could do better, or something that we can support?
Um, nothing, nothing new that, that wasn't, um, identified the previous, uh, planning cycle for this plan, which happened about five years ago. Uh, there's a, a greater emphasis this year on, in, in our region, on the, uh, urban interface as it relates to wildfire, uh, prevention. And then FEMA has also been, um, including, uh, climate change, uh, resiliency, uh, pieces to hazard mitigation plans, and that's a fairly new addition as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. All right. Uh, and finally, initiative eight, which is scale the organizational capacity of the city. Um, this one, I do have to extend my appreciation to council and be supportive of these conversations during the budget process with everything that we've got on our plate, and that's a, a growing, uh, plate every time it seems. This is, this one is easy to slip through the cracks, but council's been very supportive, and, and I appreciate that sincerely, and I know the staff does as well. Um, establishing a staffing concept that aligns. Have a question?
Sorry. Councilmember Evans.
I was trying to let you finish. Okay, so, um, the, I, when I read our packet, I was so excited to see this. And I know that I have a two fellow council members here who are going to be excited as well because this is exactly the sort of dashboard approach that the Engagement Subcommittee was asking about. I think this is a perfect framework, and I would love to see this built out on the website. So happy to hear that our new community engagement person is, that is here. But I think this is exactly the sort of thing that we were asking about and that we put into that plan. And, you know, being able to show the community, this is what we've agreed to. Here are the action steps we're taking, here's some links off to see, you know, where we are. This is so important to transparency in our government and, and helping people understand where we're putting our time and our attention and investments, and why. Um, and so I just want to really urge the good work that went into creating this presentation. Can we please work on getting this into the website in an easy format, not in an attachment buried way di- deep down in Granicus that nobody can find? Thank you.
Sounds good. Um, the, yeah, it, that's the organizational capacity, we're working on it, yeah. Uh, just finishing up this one, and again, I appreciate council's support in this piece as, uh, as we've made some changes and adds over the years to make sure that we have the resources to do all of this work. Obviously, right now, like, a lo- we have a lot of recruitment, I know, uh- work. Obviously, right now, like we have a lot of recruitment. I know, just by way of example, the three of us have spent the last few days and last week as well in back-to-back interviews, trying to make sure we're getting the best talent for our organization. So we're working on that. Opportunities to leverage technology. We've established that GIS portal for public access to information on large development and infrastructure projects. Obviously, I think we're going to take that the next step further with our new community engagement resources and our new position there, the new employee there. Because she brings a wealth of experience doing that for her previous community here, and I think we're really going to just amp that up here in the next year. Implementation of our permitting operational analysis, that's been a huge multi-year effort. We're going to hear about that this evening. That will eventually include a publicly available GIS layer for permit data, so people can go on and see permits of the property down the street or whatever they're curious about. And then, I know I've been asked by at least one council member about AI and how we can make even more efficient use of our time as staff, and we do have a group that was put together, just hasn't quite got going yet because of everything else we've got going on to work on establishing that AI policy, because that's an interesting dynamic for local government and all the requirements on it. How do we implement that? So that's a work in progress as well. I think that's me done talking for the most part. 2022 Strategic through '26 Strategic Plan work will continue through this budget and the next two years, obviously. I would anticipate a process, for those of you that are around when we created this version, again, probably mid-next year as we start ramping into budget for the following biennium.
Any other questions for the City Manager? CNN, thank you for the presentation. Very-- got through that very efficiently.
I needed some water now.
Business item number eight, update and discussion of permitting operations improvements efforts. Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council this evening. I'm excited to have Joshua Jeffrey here. He's a Public Works Management Analyst and has been instrumental in pushing this project forward and will be presenting this item. So with that, I will hand it over to Josh.
Thank you so much, and it's a pleasure to be here this evening to talk about all the amazing work that we've been trying to accomplish with this permanent operations project. So as a context and background, we've been working on this for several years, and it's been an iterative process. We began in mid-2021 where we identified the need to really streamline and improve our services. And we started with by hiring Strategica to do independent analysis on our permit operations and to see how we can better function as a city and improve our service delivery. And that culminated in a report that had 39 recommendations, and staff went through that, evaluated feasibility and what resources were needed for the implementation. From there, we hired Barry Dunn to help facilitate those permit improvements, and that's where we've kind of been up until this point. But a lot of work's been going on in the background, and so a lot of those first steps are how we've collaborated and evaluated data and collection to really understand what's going on within our permit operations. So we conducted several meetings with our consultants to review city documentation and held interviews to get a much deeper insight onto what was going on to that. Another large part of this process up until this point has also been drafting our process diagrams, our workflow diagrams, so really answering those questions, the who, what, where, when, of how permits go from the conceptual stage to actual approved. And then that has been collaborative and refined with input from both our Development Services and our Public Works Department. And then another very important step was in July 2024, we had a very intensive onsite interview session with our consultant Barry Dunn. It culminated over three days where we identified key issues that we're seeing staff really had long conversations on how we can really figure out solutions to those problems and how they can better align with the goals and culture of the city. And I will kind of want to pause and highlight that picture, because that really was staff's work. We all got together and really looked at what type of solutions were, and we, all of us ended up writing and briefly going through that. That informed basically this work product. And I mentioned, this is an example of one of the many types of workflows that go into getting a permit reviewed and issued and a land use decision reviewed and issued. And it really does show how all the departments are working with both internal and external agencies in this review process as well, particularly with the fire department as we delve into these processes. So that brings us kind of to where we are now a little bit. We're in this project implementation stage, and again, our main goal is to streamline and enhance permit operations to prove that efficiency and service delivery. We've broken it down into three major stages, but one of them subdivided. Phase one is our procedural changes in our interdepartmental coordination. This is kind of wrapping up all of that large legwork that we've been doing up to this point to get us to that next step, which would be phase two, which is our technology improvements. And that phase two A is going to be our backend system improvements where we kind of work on our side, the staff side, to make sure that the system is working and functioning in an appropriate manner. And then the phase two is the public facing. That's the user interface that our applicants would then be seeing. Then finally, we have our phase three, which is evaluating, documenting, and looking for better ways on how we can continuously improve this. So to kind of go into this a little bit, this is a high-level overview of our implementation schedule, one of the key deliverables that we've been working on for this. I know it's hard to see, so I won't belabor it too much. This is just to give you an idea of things are already moving and things are very much on track. Right now, we're in the yellow bar in terms of timetable. And then one of the other things, this is also one of the attachments in the staff report, you'll be able to see what has been completed and what's also currently in progress. So that brings us to where we are. In phase one, our procedural changes in interdepartmental coordination, our focus has been understanding the status quo and updating our procedures. We're substantially complete with this. Our last pending item right now is proposed code changes, which is currently working through the Planning Commission and will be brought to the City Council for review. They're going to have two particular components to this. One is going to be a procedural code, proposed changes, as well as one's going to be more of a submittal process changes. So that'll help codify all of these legwork that we've been doing into our codes to be able to understand that. In terms of what we've completed, we did develop that implementation plan. We implemented all of those workflows. We've also created those draft procedures, which we'll be looking at very shortly. And then a major component also is we've implemented what's called completeness review. State requirements require a completeness review process prior to entering into compliance to help make sure that item submittals are procedurally correct. And we've been piloting that process since September 2024 and are very much now engaged at a staff level of in making sure that applicants understand that completeness process and are compliant with the state requirements of it. In terms of where we're going in the future, you're going to be seeing that last kind of final stage, which is the procedural code updates. After that, you'll start to see a consolidated review process and intake meetings. Consolidated review process is a major change that will really help expedite permits for those who are ready for construction at the time of submittal. And so you'll start seeing more efficiencies start to be built into the process as this goes along. But I won't, I can go into more detail on that, but you'll see a lot of that within the code recommendations that will be coming for you. Then the last part of that is also developing more applicant guidance as these new submittals are going into the code. So they understand before they even hit the application button, the submittal. Thinking now on phase two, that is the backend improvements. So what we're looking at with this is improving permit intake, our review process and reporting, particularly for the city staff on our Excel platform. This, we actually got started with in our kickoff held in January. Our consultant, IIK Consulting, who handles our software development side of this and assists with our IT on it, is already completing that completeness workflow and implementing it into our technology solution. So now, instead of having staff be the man that's manually kind of making sure that we're meeting our timelines and goals for this, you're going to be actually seeing those efficiencies approved within our system. And they're also working right now on permit tracking integrations as well, particularly with time tracking. Key improvements we're focusing on this is that time tracking component. You'll start hearing more about how deadlines have changed within what's required for permit issuance, and we're very sensitive to those, and we want to make sure we're maintaining our obligations to the community to do that. And then another key aspect is simultaneous review process. So all staff will be working off of the same documents, commenting on the same plans, and working on them at the same times too, which will greatly increase efficiency of turnaround on reviews, we hope. And then improve document management to make sure that all our comments are being captured as we're going throughout the process. And then also management dashboards and reports to make sure that we're keeping track of what's happening. We've already finalized a very extensive list of these technology improvements that we've requested to our consultants. The next step is for us basically to finalize that scope of work with them, find out what feasibility that they feel that they can reasonably accomplish, prioritize that, and create a reasonable estimate for it. To kind of get a sense briefly as an example of what type of backend dashboard we're trying to move towards, this is an example of it. This is from a different jurisdiction, but ours looks nothing like this right now. And so staff, in trying to understand what's under review, what's actually going on, it does not have this type of information that's visually easily accessible and easily to access. So this will be a great way for us to really quickly get a snapshot of where we are within our permit processes. Moving now towards the public side of this, we really want to focus on improving our front-end user experiences. And so part of that is developing an application wizard to help guide applicants to the correct permits that they should be doing, as well as to get a better understanding of what our processes are and what the order of permits should be coming into it, as well as creating a dashboard so that they have a better understanding of where they are in that workflow too. The ultimate goal is for us to empower our users to submit complete and thorough applications at time of submittal. And moving towards that, right now, we're in planning on this with anticipating the kickoff in Q2 2025. We're demoing several product solutions and market solutions for these types of things, and we hope to have lender selection right around the same time in Q2 2025. Some key improvements on this is we want to retain user inputs as the app, they're submitting information. So if they're giving us information to help understand what type of permit that they're doing, we don't want to duplicate that in the actual application side of it, because it's, we want to make it easy for them to navigate. We want to help explain the order of approval process, as I mentioned before, as well as improve search functions and including that GIS mapping portion to understand what development is going on in the community. One reason this is staggered into two phases and broken up, it relies on the backend. So you can't, all these fields that I'm talking about, that we were building out in phase two A, that way for the public to access and interface and interact with them relies on us to do that groundwork first. So it will have a little bit of a staggered part to it, but there also will be developed kind of in tangent. So that's why there's a little bit of a shift there too. One more note, there are several technology solutions that are already on market, but none of them provide a complete solution for us for what we're looking at. So we're going to have to evaluate exactly how we meet those requirements. To provide kind of an example of what we're moving towards, this is one of those GIS interfaces from another jurisdiction. This one is, and ours wouldn't look exactly like this, but this one is from the city of Boise, Idaho. It shows different types of projects and permits under development currently. It has an easy way of navigating, using GIS to show what's going on. Then kind of thinking about what, how to guide applicants--
Josh, we have a question. Deputy Mayor Reynolds?
Yeah, I actually love this view, and my question to you is what is the barrier for being able to present this? Are we missing things on the backend? Is the data not there? Is it not correlated? Give me an idea of that. That's my first question.
I'll give, I'm not quite a full expert on this, so I want to caveat that, but I'll give you kind of a high-level overview of it. Part of the problem is, and using problem loosely here, is our GIS data set, it has to be integrated into our platform. There's about three different ways you can do that that the vendors have allowed. One, it's proprietary, that the vendor offers itself. One is more city-based, which we take more of the administrative and burden on. And then there's also consultant services that do that as well. And so with how we have invested in our GIS over the past several years, we want to make sure that the solution we come with on the permit operations analysis matches that investment and matches our overall philosophy on what GIS should work with in our city.
That kind of answer, it sounds like we have multiple solutions that we need to actually factor to make sure we get to a good place. But my other question, I see that we're going through the different phases. My curiosity is what incremental changes will permit requesters actually see as we go through this process? Because I don't know if everybody will be happy in several years when we show a big thing and say, "Look, we did all these things. It took us forever." But I want to know what incremental, what incremental progress will we be showing?
Yeah, absolutely. I think some of that is already in the works. A good example of that is our completeness reviews. Those are something that, right now, our applicants have a better understanding of than four months ago, prior to that. Another thing that we've initiated are our submittal requirements and our submittal checklists. Those are something we're providing more feedback right now to our applicants, which they're going to be able to do as they've gone through that process. Both of those are very visible immediately right now. But there's also, as we're moving through this, it's not going to quite be surprise, but there will be moments where there'll be more information kind of instantly available. Obviously, when the public user interface goes, that'll be a massive transition. With all of this, there's quite a lot of a content library that needs to be created for these guides to work through it. And so there is a very methodical way we're trying to approach that, because if we're going to be updating and it's going to massively change six months from now, and we predict that, it's not going to be accurate six months from now. We don't want to jump with all of that up immediately. Does that make sense?
And Josh, can I add a little bit more to that? So you're, Councilman, I understand you're kind of asking, what are the applicants going to kind of feel from this? And what's happening is that we're trying to create additional processes, so things are happening more upfront. Right now, things come in, we have to sort through all kinds of stuff, try to figure out whether they even got their right permits and all this other stuff. There's, what the applicants are going to be feeling is more of an upfront effort to get information to them, to help get their applications put together. Also furthermore, making the applications more ready to be submitted in the first place. So that way, then by the time the application actually does get submitted and accepted and starts getting into that compliance, we're not spending our time, as much time as we do currently, trying to make sure we've got everything we need, trying to make sure the application even is making sense, that we can actually start diving into the compliance itself. So that's one of the big changes that the users, and then through what Josh is talking about, the technologies and stuff, we're trying to figure out better ways to make this outreach work better for them, as well as for us as well.
Councilmember Ms. Campbell.
So for the backend work that's being done, is there going to come a time when it's all shut down and there's no permitting work that's going to be done, or is there some way that you're going to be doing, like, two separate programs at once while you're transitioning?
Exactly.
Okay, because I was going to say--
Yeah, there's a production side and a public side. And basically, as the development happens, all of the changes happen on the development side before moving to the production, the public side.
Well, I meant more that when you guys are, when you're doing the work on the production side, when that system is switching over, is that going to impact your ability to work on some of the backend reports that you need to be working on?
No. No, because we're actually incrementing, we're initiating these in incremental approaches. So like, for example, as Josh mentioned, we've already started implementing changes in our completeness review process. So the applicants don't really feel the difference on it, but we're pulling, as we're working on these, as Josh has helped leading us, getting these things through, we're implementing these in, so it's a little bit more of a smooth process, rather than just suddenly having a, this is one of the things we talked about, whether we would just put everything-- having a, this is one of the things we talked about, whether we would just put everything together and then drop it. We didn't think that was the best way to do it. So what we're doing is we're working on pieces of it at a time, and as those things are ready, we're implementing those out so that we can have a more smoother transition on that.
That was my worry, is that you were going to be juggling applications at the same time that you're going through systems. And I'm glad to hear that you're doing it behind the scenes and you're, I guess, becoming more comfortable with the process as it goes on. So you're seeing the changes incrementally, but perhaps the frontend, we will, we would probably see something a little bit more abrupt, but for you guys, which is the important part, is it's not going to be as difficult for you, once the transition happens, it's going to be more gradual.
Exactly.
Okay.
And I think the most abrupt piece that'll happen is the intake part of it. When we start really tightening that up and getting that implemented, that will be a bit more abrupt. But at the same time, we're, we're doing more outreach even now with applicants, trying to work with them to make sure those applications are better quality when they come in.
I think I could add just one piece, Councilmember, if I'm understanding your question. It, one of, and this goes back to part of what I mentioned in my presentation about the organizational capacity. And part of, you know, this has been a multi-year, years prods, project. And part of the reason that is because you're exactly right. Our, again, our staff, led by our directors in Public Works and Development Services, have just had to be heads down processing permits. So being able to make, to set time aside to make progress on this project has become a second priority, because getting those permits out the door has been the priority. With the addition and some of the changes in staffing, and specifically in this one, helping, having Josh added to the team and, and in Public Works, has created more of that bandwidth to be able to do the work, to make the work easier, if that makes sense. So again, that's another example of tinkering with our organizational structure to be able to do some of this important work.
Yeah, and I just want to add, I mean, I'm going to put a big kudos out here with Josh because essentially, he's got some experience in doing some of the stuff previously that he was able to bring in here. So to what Brandon was talking about, Ash and I have, have all these other things going on, so we're not able to quite, you know, put as much energy into, we are ta, you know, we're giving all the feedback and stuff like that, but we've needed somebody with more expertise. Barry Dunn helped a long ways to that, but it's not the same thing with a consultant that's on the outside versus actually having somebody with knowledge and experience inside. And so I can tell you, we're moving forward on this because a lot of kudos to Josh, who's actually been doing such a fantastic job at pushing us forward on this stuff.
Councilmember Evans.
Great, thank you. I remember when we first had the consultants come give us the presentation, and I called it shelfware. I'm so excited to see how far it's come in this time. So yeah, kudos and, and glad to see it. I just have a few project management questions on this. So for the simultaneous reviews, I'm assuming since that's in a key improvement, that we're not doing that right now. So is there a process set up? Do you have a, a way to groom your backlog, make sure that nothing's falling through the cracks, that kind of thing?
So we do actually currently have a consolidated review process, it's just a mess. And so the.
So it's bringing it together?
Yeah, so I mean, one of the problems we have with, like, applicants will want to bring in and submit their building permits along with like a site plan review, which is a land use permit. And the problem is their building permits actually aren't up to the level what you need for a building permit.
Okay.
And so, so that consolidated review doesn't work. And so part of this cleaning up is if somebody does want to do a consolidated review, they actually have to make sure all the permits involved in that, and we'll check this, are actually all to the level that they need to be so that you can do a consolidated review. And so there's a lot, you'll, you'll see this when this gets in front of you, probably, let's see here, probably in March or April, we'll be bringing a planning commission recommendation to you, and we can talk a little bit more details about it. But yeah, we, we do have a process now, it's just a mess, and we're cleaning that up quite a bit with the new code provisions.
Okay, that's great. Another question that I had, as I was reading through the packet and seeing it on the slide here again, one of the key improvements in Phase 2B is to retain user inputs for easier applications. I think that's great from a user side. I would love to know, when we get to that March or April, what are we doing to make sure that we have data security, encryption, all that kind of stuff? Because if, if people are putting this kind of information in, that is like pre-mo targeting for people who want to steal all sorts of things. So that's just going to be a big question mark for me, is what are we doing and how are we ensuring that we have all the right privacy and data handling policies in place?
Yeah, I think a lot of that is, because our tracking software is not internally, it's hosted actually by Asella, and it's, and it's based up in the clouds and stuff. And so they actually handle a lot of that security and stuff, actually, they work through them.
Okay, I just want, I would just like to double click on that, since we're going to be having that on our sites. It's something that's very important, and I think as a city, we need to be really, really thoughtful about that kind of stuff. Thank you.
Jumping back in here, the, one more example I wanted to show, kind of as a dashboard, again, not going to look like this, but to give a sense of what's happening, you have an idea of what, what happens when people get started, what, how to apply for permits, giving order to, to this, this long process. As well as, we will be trying to do something like a, a FES estimator and, and permit timelines as well. Phase three is, is the evaluation documentation improvement. We're going to be looking at how these processes have worked and whether or not we, they, they've actually done what we needed them to do. This will be done after the, the, the technology improvements go live. The big part of this is documenting those changes for continuity and making sure that we develop that library that's both the public library for applications, but also our side. Every kind of technology, you have to have a, a little bit on both, right? And so making sure that we have that and, and as a resource for training for staff too. And then I do want to know, evaluation's going to be ongoing as this, as I mentioned, this has been iterative. And this isn't just been instantaneous on, on our side of it. And so we are kind of working out the kinks as we, we move along, so it looks as smooth as possible when it hits the public. So in terms of next steps, we're going to build on our progress of, of Phase 1 and prepare for Phase 2 to streamline the, the technology side of it. And then we will be returning to council to review any of the major milestones for Phase 2 as our software development progresses. That concludes my, my presentation. Happy to answer any more questions.
Councilmember Art.
Not really a question, but I wanted to thank you all for this work. I know it is difficult to put this on top of the actual work of completing permits and reviewing that. And I do think it is really key for both increasing the speed and the predictability of the permit process for the city, as well as transparency, both for those who are applying for permits and for our community members who are interested in what's happening in the community around them. So just thank you for this work, and I am very eager to see some of the public interface when it goes live. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Business item number nine, approval of the 2025 Planning Commission Public Spaces Commission Work Plans. Who's presenting that? Mr. Grumbach.
Yeah, so good evening, Mayor and members of the council. So Alex and I are going to actually tag team on this. Our plan here now, Alex, correct me if I'm misspeaking on this, but the plan is that we'll go first to the Planning Commission Work Plan, and then we'll ask you to take an action on that potentially, or at least discuss at the minimum tonight about it. And then once you're done with that, then we will do the Public Space Commission Work Plan after that. So we'll take one plan at a time on that.
Will you be asking for a motion as a whole, or one for planning?
One for each one.
Okay.
All right, so, and this is fairly short. You've got the work plan, the proposed work plan from the Planning Commission is in your packet. I just want to kind of highlight a couple of things here. So from the previous work plan from 2024, we had a pretty busy year. There was a lot of things to be worked on, and that included, the big one, which is now in front of you right now, was the 2024-2044 update for our comprehensive plan. There was also the transportation plan that got through. New sign code was completed last year, updates to our off-street parking regulations, the North Shore School District's capital facility plan, which is one of the things we do every year. And then also we had our latest round of the update to the six-year capital improvement plan. So a lot of things, and this doesn't necessarily cover every detail, this is just kind of the main things that got to you, that you ended up taking actions on. I want to also note that we had 14 regular and special meetings, and that includes skipping meetings in November. And just to give you an idea how often the Planning Commission was meeting last year. And then as a, a little side piece on this, they also included in their stuff last year were amendments to the bylaws because they wanted to add more around the remote participation provisions. Council already has some stuff like this, they wanted to do the, had some similar provisions for remote participation for Planning Commission meetings. Next slide. So a couple of things that are carrying over that have not been completed in 2024 that we're carrying over into 2025 and are in the work plan include the critical areas regulations, those updates, it's actually part of the comp plan update stuff we're working on, design review standards update, this is in response to a new requirement from the state. Also, after we get done with the comp plan piece of it, we have the development regulations. And you'll see that I kind of broke some of this down. So some of it was part of last year that's carrying over, including the middle housing pieces and the East Rail mixed use. But also new for 2025 includes the next annual part of the North Shore School District's capital facilities plan, project grant procedures, which we were just talking a little bit about previously, permit checklist, which I think there was a comment made about that as well. And then we've got this thing called unit lot subdivisions, that's a new requirement in the state that we've got to incorporate. And then we'll be updating our commute trip reduction provisions as well. So those are some of the new things that have been added to the work plan. Next slide. So I have highlighted in yellow the new items, and basically what you're seeing is what was before kind of all listed under as periodic review development regulations. We kind of broke this down a little bit more into different tasks, different code amendment pieces that you'll be seeing coming to group together. I do want to mention something because you've had, pretty regularly now, you've had those comments about the private road standards. And just so you're aware, we're aware that those are some provisions that actually need to be updated as part of our middle housing in order not to become a barrier for the middle housing. So working and double checking other related provisions of the middle housing, which includes road standards and stuff, will also be incorporated in addition to the zoning, will be also working on those pieces as well. So it's already actually incorporated into the middle housing.
So Mr. Grumbach, that would address Mr. Azari's concerns?
He's completely aware of this, we've had this conversation with him multiple times.
Okay, thank you.
So he is aware that that's how we are handling that. Because we need to actually know how the middle housing stuff's going to work before we actually know what we're going to do exactly with those road standards as well. So they kind of work together. So I believe that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. This is the motion up here for you. And if you do want to propose any changes, that would also be part of this process as well.
Councilmember Ms. Campbell.
So part of middle housing, is that going to include the potential to talk about affordability throughout the city? Or do we, would we, would you want specific guidance to talk about that?
Yeah, so there's, so there's a couple of things that we have to get done. There, there's things that we need to get done by next June in order to avoid, avoid that model ordinance. And then there's things that we have a little bit more time on. So when I talk about the middle housing, it may end up getting broken down into a couple of pieces. There's the part that we have to do about like the two units per lot, that kind of stuff that we have to get done. And then there's these other parts that are part of the comp plan, which we'll want to get further direction on council on that, about like the, are we going to do inclusion in our zoning, just in our mixed use zones? Or are we going to look to do it more broadly throughout the city? The comp plan supports it more broadly, we just will need to get some of that verification. Depending on how some of those conversations go, we might bring it all together, incorporate those into the middle housing pieces, or if there needs to be a lot more conversation because of these other deadlines, we may pull that out and break it down as a, as like a middle housing A and B piece too. So there's a little bit of fluidity as to how this will come to you, but it's, and some of that's just going to depend on how much conversation and how much further deep diving we need to get into some of these things will kind of dictate some. Because like I said, we have some things, we don't want that model ordinance to kick in on us in, at the end of next June, so we want to make sure we get those things done at a minimal by next June. And then things like the East Rail mixed use standards, as well as potentially some of these other things, we can take more time on those because even though they are part of our comp plan update, we're not necessarily facing consequences if we take more time on those.
Right, so you're, I was just making sure, you don't need us to make another motion to, to specifically say, talk about affordability? That's, that is already in your mind included in, when you say middle housing, that's already included in it?
Absolutely. Yeah, and like I said, we'll further break this down as, as we get into these conversations and see how this kind of plays out and seeing about some of these timelines and stuff we need to work with. I move to approve the 2025 Planning Commission Work Plan as presented.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Deputy Mayor Renoff, the other floor.
I believe we, we kind of covered all the questions. One of the important things that we wanted to make sure was included there was, number one, Ms. Azari's issue that is a constituent facing issue, and also affordable housing, which is a plan that we want to cover as a city. We look forward to this coming back from Planning Commission and hearing what they have to say in their interfacing with the public.
Any other questions? Discussion, nothing? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and council, just move quickly into the Public Spaces Commission Work Plan. Before we take a look at the plan itself as it's proposed, I just wanted to add a few bit of information background on how we got here. The plan that you'll see on subsequent slides is inclusive of commission feedback. We took that to the last commission meeting on January 23rd. We had a pretty robust discussion about the items proposed there. So what you'll see, it does have their feedback included. And also on the subsequent slides, just as you saw, on the Planning Commission Work Plan, we've got a loose schedule identified with each of those items. That does change from time to time. We try our best to adhere to the schedule we've identified, but as programs and projects develop, those, those do change sometimes. As with the last work plan as well, we are presenting this to council for final consideration. So if you have anything you would like to add or change, let's certainly talk about that. So I'll just pull out a couple of these and go fairly quickly through this, but of course, we're here to answer any questions you may have. Lines one through five are annual items, and they are designated as complete slash ongoing because we intend to keep those rolling into next year. So while each of those was completed last year, again, they are annual items, so we'll pick them up again for this year. Line seven relates to an art piece to be installed at the 145th Street Crossing near Chateau Saint Michelle. We've been working closely with King County on this, and we believe the piece will finally be installed later this spring. So we're hopeful that, that schedule maintains as well. Skipping down to line 11, as the trestle placement inches closer to becoming a reality, we're looking to come back, bring final design for the trestle and landscaping in the next few months. So we'll get commission input there as well. On line 12, we've got the East Rail Plan. As council recalls, obviously, there's quite a bit of process to get this effort off the ground and to begin the actual planning. We envision that the commission will have a couple opportunities to weigh in on the development of the scope. Of course, as will council, have final authority to approve that scope, and also looking at the bid and securing a consultant to complete that work. Line 15, we're carrying over from last year.
Mr. Herzog.
Yes.
Line 13, it says quarter two and then quarter four. Can you explain what, why, what's going on in those two different quarters?
Yeah, that's a, that's a brand new item. We are looking at, going out and seeking bids for art in the new roundabout that we're, that we're proposing here. The first, well, excuse me, the quarter two X there relates to bringing back bids from artists hopefully, and finalizing the scope of work there, and then ultimately, recommendation to council on the actual artist that council will take final action on.
Is there any discussion or requirement or any policy that we have using local artists for this process?
We took initial criteria for this sort of artist selection to the commission in, I think it was November, December, something like that. And that was one of the criteria that they honed in on, that they would like to see local artists, not just in Woodinville, but the surrounding area as well. So really focusing on local art was important with the commission.
Councilmember Ms. Campbell.
So there's the Tree City designation, and then there's the tree code. Do we anticipate that we're going to be changing policies in terms of tree code, number of trees you can cut down in a year versus two years, that sort of thing? Is that update part of this, or is this just more of the designation and I don't know if we're doing the canopy analysis again?
We are doing a canopy analysis again. That's independent of the tree code piece. We've actually had, been trying to get back to the tree code for about the last three or four years because there's a bunch of things we've ran into that aren't working. And so there could be some policy, probably will be some policy things that we're going to want to talk about and updating. Plus, we need to also address some conflicts and things that we've got within the code itself. There's some pieces that are extremely difficult to manage, and so. to manage. And so, that's part of this effort as well.
And then one more question about the trees species list. There are the trees on Northeast Woodenville Way that are sort of buckling the sidewalks and are coming towards their end of life. Is that something that we're going to talk about replacing with species that perhaps are more appropriate for power lines that are nearby?
Yeah. This won't actually get to that. That's more about projects and what you're doing with projects. The species list is actually going through though, and this is actually one of the areas that is, we've got some problems with because the, the, the species list we have includes trees that a lot of, are often referred to as weed trees that we will actually counsel. This is part of the evaluation of the species list. And it is also going back through and making sure, we've already, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Amanda, but I think we've already done a lot of work previously about what trees are appropriate for right of ways and under power lines and stuff. So, we have a pretty good list, but it's going to be going back through, double checking that, and then also going through and sorting through what trees are actually probably shouldn't even, that we don't necessarily want to encourage because they're kind of like, more like weed trees and stuff. So, that's what that list update's all about.
And then when completed, that'll, if there's any code amendments, it's going to go from Public Spaces to Planning Commission to talk about any particular code changes for trees, and then it would come back to us.
Right. And the species list is not a code amendment. That's actually an administrative function, but we would run that past the Public Space Commission before finalizing that. But then, yes, our intent with when we finally get to the tree code pieces is that we'll be working with the Public Space Commission before eventually going to Planning Commission with it.
All right. I think I left off on line 15 there. Just would add that the community art program, you know, that's something we simply did not have enough bandwidth to get to last year. That item was added by council during the adoption of the 2024 work plan. We intend to carry that forward and see if we can make some progress on it. Line 16 is really more of a placeholder. We don't have any specific items related to the Harvest Project quite yet, but we thought we'd include this line, as I said, as a placeholder, as that project is really going to be transformative in the area. And if there's opportunity for the commission to provide feedback, we'd certainly like to do that. So, include it there just as a placeholder. Finally, line 17 relates to the creative district that you just took a formal step in creating. So, congrats there. We'll continue to keep our eye on opportunities for intersection with the commission as the creative district moves closer to formalization. And that concludes my presentation. But if you have any questions, we're certainly happy to answer them.
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the 2025 Public Spaces Commission work plan as presented.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Deputy Mayor Randolph.
This one looks huge. It looks like there's going to be a lot to do there. We have a lot of exciting things coming to Woodenville. And I believe our Public Spaces Commission will have a lot of work to do. So, I have confidence that they'll get it done, but I definitely want them to be more vociferous than they may have been in the past because they have a lot of large projects that need to be pushed forward.
Any other discussion, comments? Yeah, I'd like to reiterate that. That's, it's actually a pretty exciting time to be on Public Spaces. Some other years, maybe not as exciting. But there's a lot of impactful projects that they'll be working on, and I look forward to a good discussion and work product. I appreciate the effort. So, any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Number 10, second study session, 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review, Planning Commission Recommendation. Mr. Grumbow.
So, I'm going to have Amanda actually is going to take you through the study session for tonight. So, it looks like she's getting her PowerPoint up, and I'll turn it over to her.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Omgren. And as Robert mentioned, this is the second of two planned study sessions on the 2044 Comprehensive Plan, or 2024 Comprehensive Plan. I feel like we call it either or. So, just briefly, last time, Robert took you through, you know, kind of the big picture, kind of some of the background, the vision and intent. And then you all talked about the land use and housing chapters in a lot of depth because there was a lot of changes and a lot of technical background that went into that pieces. So, tonight, we're going to attempt to go through the rest of the chapters. Luckily, the changes are a lot smaller in most of those chapters, so it should be a lot easier to digest. And then the intention is the first reading or public hearing will be at the next February meeting or potentially March meeting, just depending on how things can get scheduled. And then there'll be a second reading and adoption. Also, it's worth noting, which I think this already came up tonight, but Planning Commission is work, starting to work on a lot of these development regulations that actually implement the Comprehensive Plan as we speak. So, those are working their way through the system, and you'll be seeing those as well in the, hopefully not too distant future. That all just depends on how much, how quickly staff can get them done and then how that goes. So, again, Robert covered this big picture last time, but we're doing this now because it's a requirement. So, Comprehensive Plans look at a 20-year planning horizon. So, it's now, or 2024 through 2044. And so, the Growth Management Act requires that we do it periodically. We have to respond to changes in state law. There were also a lot of changes with King County's countywide planning policies that we need to respond to. And then there's also several different review boards that we had to go through this process. So, we've been just kind of working our way through all of that at the same time. And starting in 2023, we really started to work on pulling together all of this information that goes into plan development. So, it's a lot of community preference, data, need to looking at the Growth Management Act, state procedural criteria for adopting comp plans, countywide planning policies, and then the multi-county policy vision 2050, which is the Puget Sound Regional Council's vision 2050. And all of that goes into the plan development and the Comprehensive Plan. And then from it, the next step is the plan implementation through things like development regulations and city programs. And then again, just as a reminder, we did kind of two phases of public engagement through this. Phase one was in the summer, primarily the summer of 2023, although some of it did extend beyond that. And that was a very broad-based community engagement. And then phase two was a little bit more specific. It was open house, some information meeting, public hearing. Where we did public hearing over three meetings with the Planning Commission this fall. And then, of course, you know, through all of this, we've been maintaining a project website. We've done mailings and social media. And I think the mailings to all the addresses in Woodenville has been one of the more effective ways of getting the word out. So, that is something we did several of throughout the process, and we heard a lot of people receive that, and that's how they got news. Also, as a reminder, over the last five years, well, I guess even further beyond that, but the city's been working on updating a lot of the different plans, so like the transportation plan, the parks and rec and open space plan, climate action plan, housing action plan, economic development plan. And again, all of these fed into these different elements in the Comprehensive Plan. And many of these were the basis. For example, the transportation plan that was just adopted in 2024 directly fed into the transportation element in the comp plan. So, there's a few differences, but the goals and policies are, you know, basically one for one from the transportation plan. And there was outreach that went along with all of these, or all of these different plans as well. So, all of this is a cumulative effort over the years. And here is just a list of the chapters and a reminder of which chapters were covered at the last study session. And then we're going to attempt to just very briefly touch on the remaining six chapters. I think that's six. The glossary and references, I wasn't planning uncovering, but you all are welcome to take a look at that, of course. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to Robert or I. So, the economic development chapter, basically where we started with this elements update was we looked at the previous Comprehensive Plan, the 2015 Plan. And then we looked at the economic development plan that was adopted in 2020. And we started going through the previous element and updating the information based on that 2020 Economic Development Plan. One major difference is the comp plan has to be a 20-year plan, and that Economic Development Plan was a 10-year plan. So, some of it had to be, you know, just kind of expanded on to meet that 20-year mark. But it is largely consistent with that and updated to that plan. And then, once the text of it was updated, we started looking at the goals and policies. And so, a lot of these updates were based on feedback we heard, or we either got from that economic development plan that was approved in 2020, or they came from comments from the Planning Commission or public. What we heard from the Planning Commission on this element specifically was a lot of concern about making sure that the economy is good for workers and businesses, but also serves the needs of residents. And so, in this example here, the underlying sections are new, and the rest of it is what was existing in 2015. So, one thing Planning Commission specifically wanted added was F there, which says businesses that support local needs of residents, including personal services, daycares, grocery stores, and outpatient medical services. And then another thing they were very concerned about was monitoring the changing economic conditions and adjusting target sectors as needed. So, just being aware of the changing needs of our economic, our economy. So, and being responsive to that. Here's another section where a few changes were made, or were made. I think Advocate for Improved Regional Transit Connectivity came out of the Economic Development Plan. And then I think that leverage for the east rail corridor development as an opportunity to improve regional connectivity for Woodenville also came out of that Economic Development Plan. So, those are a couple of examples where staff looked at that plan and then added some information into these goals to reflect what was done in that 2020 plan. And then just one final example to keep illustrating the types of changes that were made. I believe that this one was made, so Policy 3.2, ensure that the city policies are inclusive and accessible to all residents. That previously said to families or family-friendly, something along those lines. And I believe that all residents replaced it to be more inclusive. And I think that that may have come out of the RDI memo, if I remember correctly. And then the next one is to talking about enhance the city's parks, trails, and green canopy, particularly in neighborhoods with lower income levels that lack such features. And again, that's just being, trying to be more sensitive to the fact that there are areas of our city that have a lot of green canopy, and then there are other areas that are lacking it. So, you know, prioritizing resources where they could be most useful. So, that's all I had for that element. Parks, rec, and open space. This element, we really didn't make very many changes to, other than reformatting it. It was updated when the 2020 Parks and Rec element, Parks, Rec, and Open Space Plan was redone. And I don't know how many of you were here for that or paid attention to the community outreach around that. But there was quite a bit of outreach, and that was a, a pretty solid effort that was made then. So, not wanting to reopen that when we have plenty of other things that we needed to work on. We did just add the inventory from the plan. And then we added east rail information. So, again, kind of, that is one area where what was known in 2019, when most of that plan was written, has developed in a good way over the last five years. So, updating that section just to reflect those updates.
Councilmember Best Kemel.
Wood Trails is going to be added to that list as well. I can barely see it from here, so you'll have to tell me if it's on there. I see Woodin, I see Woodenville Heights, I see Tanglin Ridge, I see De Young, Rotary, Wilmot, Wooden Creek, but I don't see Wood Trails. So, can we add that as well?
Is there any complications with that?
Yeah, we'll double check that. I mean, this came out of the pro plan, and I don't recall if we had wood trails in the pro plan or not. That's what I don't remember off the top of my head. But we'll double check on that.
Okay. And moving right along if there's nothing else. Transportation and circulation. I think that probably all of you remember spending quite a bit of time with the, the 2024 Transportation Plan that was adopted in June of 2024. So, with that plan that was developed, they put together goals and policies that were able to be, you know, dropped into the Comprehensive Element. And they were also aware when they did that plan of what the GMA requirements were going to be for the Comprehensive Plan so that, along with the plan development, the consultants also helped put together a lot of the information we were going to need for this element. So, it is consistent with that, which is a requirement, and largely just reflects the same information with one major exception, maybe a couple. But the biggest exception being that the GMA requirement is for a fiscally constrained project list. And so, the project list in the Comprehensive Plan is a much smaller list than what's in the transportation plan. And it, you know, has, it's based on projected funding and also has information on projected funding sources and potential gaps in funding. So, that is probably the biggest difference. This is an area where, so we've, I think I mentioned earlier, both the Department of Commerce and the Puget Sound Regional Council has to take a look at this plan and certify it and review it. And so, the Puget Sound Regional Council in particular had quite a few comments on the transportation element. And so, in talking with our consultants, we think that all the information exists. We just need to bring over some more of it from that transportation plan. And so, staff is working on pulling that together, and that will be available at a future meeting for your review.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Do you recall what specific concerns they had at PSRC?
Missing information, a lot of missing information. So, yeah, we'll, we'll pull that all in. But it's stuff that, we had a meeting with our transportation consultant that put this stuff originally together. And they indicated that all the stuff that PSRC had mentioned was already in our 2024 Transportation Plan. So, it's just pulling it out and putting it into the transportation element.
Okay. Is there a scope on the missing information, just to understand what?
It's things like the finance information. And I don't remember all the particular comments off the top. We'll go over this with you when we bring back the updates with this information, and we can go into more detail with you. Just don't remember off the top of our head tonight.
Thanks.
So, the next element, it used to be two separate elements, capital facilities and utilities. And we actually combined them into one, being that the city contracts or has a lot of outside services provided by, or services provided by outside agencies. It kind of didn't make sense to have them as two separate elements because it was weird where you draw the line between capital facilities and utilities in our case. And so, we combined them into one element. We focused on adding maps to show service area boundaries wherever possible. It might just be because we're planners, but I always look at a map first if I'm given one. I think it's a lot easier to look at and follow. And then we updated goals and policies based on a variety of different inputs. So, and I'll, I'll talk about those when we get to them. So, this is just an example of the Woodenville Water District Service Area, which is one of the maps we put in. This is a, I think I put this in your package. is, I think I put this in your packet as well, but this is some GIS data we got. This was, is kind of a new section in the element, where we talked about King County onsite sewage systems. So we got some information from the county. They actually reached out to us to share this information. And basically, the concern is septic systems over a certain age, on lots under a certain size, are more likely to break, basically, and are going to be harder to find a secondary site for them on the lots. And so having that information available is helpful in planning for future utility needs, sewer needs specifically. So there's a whole discussion in the comp plan around that that is useful. It also helps address some of Puget Sound Regional Council's priorities about septic, or onsite sewer systems. I'm told that's the correct term for them, but I want to call them septic systems still. And so that is useful information. And I think maybe the good news here is you can see a lot of the red ones, which are the biggest concern, are in areas that are not the R1 lots, so it's potentially easier to run sewer in that area. So. And then the goals and policies, because we were combining two previous elements into one, we reorganized them into, there's a couple that apply to both, kind of overall goals and policies, and then there's capital facilities, more specific ones, and then utility-specific ones. And the new and modified goals and policies are based primarily on the Climate Action Plan Integration Memo. I don't, I think everybody remembers probably that there was a climate action plan, and along with that, the consultants put together an integration memo for when it came time to work on the comprehensive plan. And so in that, there were suggestions about updates to the capital facilities and utility elements, and I believe some of the other elements, but that one, we, a lot of them applied to this chapter, and then also the climate action chapter. The planning commission's input, and then we received a whole bunch of comments from Puget Sound Energy, which were useful in their goals to move to a greener, more resilient energy grid, which goes hand-in-hand with their presentation earlier today. So that was kind of useful.
Councilmember Wes Campbell.
So I actually had a question about the, there's a reduction of waste stream in there. It's, the capital facility's 12, and it talks about expand residential and commercial recycling and composting services. And then 12 dot three, it says collaborate with King County and regional solid waste utility providers. It seems that we're, in 12 dot one, we should maybe mention Puget Sound, or the fact that we have to work with King County waste haulers, we can't do it on our own. So like, we can't expand residential and commercial compost services, and we can't encourage, we don't have access to the programs because we're part of a consortium rather than on our own. So can we clarify that a little bit? Because it makes it sound like we can make more declarations about composting than we can. And if we can, can we get composting every week and recycling every week? Because that would be great. But I want to make sure that there's not expectations that we can change things that we can't.
I think we could probably do that.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that, and then also just make sure about consistency with other policies and stuff and everything. But yeah, I think we should be able to do that.
I do think that was one, one thing I remember the planning commission bringing up, back when we were talking about the climate action plan, was there was a whole lot of like, these are great goals and policies, but how much of it can the city actually directly influence versus how much is just like, you know, harder to influence, but that, that would be maybe a good clarification. So an example of, I think these ones were all new, of an updated section of goals and policies, and I think these ones all came from Puget Sound Energy, so support local and regional efforts to equitably transition energy infrastructure and mitigate climate risk. And I should note that we took what PSC gave us, but we didn't take everything word from word. We, we reworded some of it to make it better fit the community. And with that, it's worked towards achieving a just clean energy transition by adopting codes that support equitable citing of existing and new technologies in partnership with PSC and community partners, support EV charging infrastructure. You know, you can read the rest of them, but it's, the last one talks about reducing the risk and impact of wildfires by working closely and supporting utilities and local fire departments in their wildfire mitigation efforts. That's another one, I think, that is often on our minds these days. And then an example of another one that came from the Climate Action Integration Memo is build a program and devote resources to achieve carbon neutrality for city facilities, operations, and services. And that, of course, is one that we can have more of a direct impact on. And then pursue public-private partnerships to seek funding sources to accelerate clean energy projects, which is another one from PSC. So there's quite a variety of new ones from the, primarily from those two sources, but there are probably some others in there that the planning commission influenced or staff just rewrote a little bit. And then the waste one is the last one I was going to mention, but I think we already covered that one. So. The natural environment is what I often think of as the critical areas. For this element, we added some information about the 2019 tree canopy analysis. This is to better reflect how important trees are to the community in Woodenville and to the character of Woodenville. We had a little bit of information in the previous comp plan, but this just provides a lot more information about it. And then, otherwise, it was mostly updates and then minor edits to the text of it. And then there were some minor changes identified by staff and planning commission to the goals and policies. And then we received quite a few comments from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and a few from the tribes. I think it was the Siamish tribe?
Snoqualmie.
Snoqualmie tribe, thank you, from the Snoqualmie tribe. And so we did make some additional changes to our goals and policies based on the comments from the Fish, Department of Fish and Wildlife and the tribe. So these are just the underlying sections are some examples of changes we made, based on those comments we got from Fish and Wildlife and the tribe.
I would add just also to that, because Fish and Wildlife, I think most of you probably are aware, have kind of their own mission. Not that we're inconsistent with their mission, but they, they tend to be looking more outside of urban areas and forested areas. And so some of their comments kind of actually got more directed towards like creating forested conditions and things like that. So when we went through Fish and Wildlife, and I mentioned this because this came up with the planning commission as well, when we went through these things and made recommended edits and changes and stuff, we tried to make sure on these things that they fit our urban environment and fit Woodenville. And so we weren't just necessarily taking comments from state agencies and then just slapping them in there. There was an analysis that went through as to how well that actually could work, because, again, we, this has particularly happened with our critical areas regulations, too. They have a tendency to make their comments based more like if you were in the woods and stuff. And while there is a lot of that that reflects Woodenville, there's things that go a little bit overboard that if we were to actually do some of those things, you wouldn't have any space left to build. So some of the modifications and things based on comments we got from them, there was an analysis that went in that, and we modified some of their suggestions to reflect more Woodenville.
Councilmember Wes Campbell.
Can I just make, so E4 dot three, and it might be that it's 1015, and my brain is not fully functional, but when I'm reading it, the underlying section, so it's practice land cover management, et cetera, et cetera, by clustering lots and developments, native growth protection easements, dense vegetative zones, and preservation of tree canopy zones, could be read as we're going to take residential lots and put them in native growth protection easements, dense vegetative zones, and preservation of tree canopy zones. So is there a way that we can move clustering lots and developments to the back, or to the end of the sentence, and because of the, the land cover management and things that we're going to do to prevent, to preserve the trees, should be all the things that we're going to do to preserve them, and we're going to put lots in developments? Does, does that make sense? It just, for me, it reads like, we're going to cluster lots in developments, native growth protection easements, et cetera, which, no, 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 we're not going to put housing there. We're going to put housing in developments and leave trees where trees are.
Yeah, I think we're following you on that. Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that and see what we can do with that and massage that a little bit.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I do want, I mean, I see what you're saying. Part of me wonders if it's also, because it's underlined, but, but we can definitely just move that clause to the end.
Or we may need to play with it a little bit more.
Yeah.
We're always tinkering with the language, so.
The Shoreline Master Program, this is an area we really didn't touch, other than moving it to a separate chapter and updating the formatting so that it fits. And this is something we can't touch, because it has to be approved by ecology. So, and it was updated, when did it get approved? 2020? 2022, I mean?
I think it was 2022, yeah. The Shoreline, the Shoreline Master Program, can't, you can't update those policies while going through a shoreline update program. You can't do it through GMA, because we did get comments about updating some of this stuff and from some of the agencies, but you can't, until we get to updating our shoreline next time, those policies can't be touched at this time.
Yeah. So that one is just the look changed, but otherwise, it's, and we moved it to its own chapter, because it was in the same chapter as the natural environment. But it's otherwise, just staying the same. And then the last one we're going to talk about, we made it, is climate change and resiliency. And this is a completely new element. It's based on the Climate Action Plan that was adopted in June of 2023, but modified to meet the Growth Management Act requirements. It should be noted that we didn't actually have to adopt a climate change and resiliency element until 2029. That's the state law. But it seemed like because we've got this Climate Action Plan that was just adopted, it felt like it was a good time to go ahead and get ahead of that curve just a little bit and start this element. And I believe we even got some comments from Puget Sound Regional Council, you know, pointing, or was it Commerce, one of them, pointing out that like, well, you don't technically have to do it. We have some comments, we'll give them to you, but like, it's kind of up to you which way you want to go on them, since it's not required yet.
There's a certification process that we're still not quite understanding. That doesn't have to be done now, but if we can do it, we may do that as part of this process, or we may hold off on it. But Commerce says it takes about 120 days to do the certification. So that, and that's, the reason I mentioned that is because that, we're not sure what we currently have would get certified, or if they would want some additional changes to it. So that's one of the things we're not real clear about at this point.
But it's a lot of, it's kind of like a streamlined version of what's in that Climate Action Plan. So it's fairly cut down as far as the background information, but it does have some interesting information that mirrors kind of what was already, what was in that other element. So it's got some charts about, you know, why we're doing this, kind of the business as usual, and then kind of what different adjustments could be made. So, and then again, the different sectors. And like I said, I remember a whole lot of questions from the planning commission when we first talked about that, about what exactly we could influence versus what we can't necessarily influence. So it's kind of hard, but, but there are pretty good goals here. And so the goals and policies were the ones that were drafted from that, that element. So I think you've already seen them. Did you have something to add, Robert?
Yeah, I mean, now you just get into the last slide, I just wanted to note, Councilmember Wes Campbell, we did, your question about wood trails is actually in there. It's actually, it wasn't up on the slide, because it didn't have the entire list, but wood trails is listed as restricted-use park. So it is, it is actually in the comp plan. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. And I wanted also just note and kind of elaborate a little bit on this. Most likely, we're not going to have anything, if you want to have another study session before we go to first reading, we're happy to do that. Otherwise, what we'll probably do, it won't be this month, it'll be March, one of the meetings in March, we would advertise and schedule with the first reading to have another public hearing on it. But again, if you want to have a study session, another study session before then, we're happy to do that as well. So just let us know on that. But otherwise, if, if not, then, and we'll be bringing changes back to you, not just what was talked about here tonight a little bit, but also we've got to address some comments we've gotten from some of the agencies and stuff. And so we've got additional edits and changes to some of the policies and goals reflective of that, as well as the transportation plan that Amanda talked about earlier. We've got to update that to address a bunch of comments from PSRC as well.
Any questions or comments on that? What's the desire of council regarding future study session, or? Councilmember Wes Campbell.
You said meeting in March would be first meeting, so that would be the 11th since the 4th. We don't have a meeting, is that correct? So first reading of the comp plan would be March 11th?
Sorry about that. We'll try to do the March 11th. A lot of it depends on how fast my consultants can get these other things turned around, and we can put information together for you, so you're, it's very clear what's been changed and stuff. But we're targeting March 11th. If we miss that one, it'll be the second meeting, which I guess would be the following week. So either the 11th or the 18th would be the first reading and a hearing.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Would we be able to get this to review? Because I know you're going to go through and do a number of changes. We just want an opportunity to review it. We don't need another study session, I don't think, but we want to review the changes.
Absolutely. We try to get that out as, as quick as we can. And so I gotta get my consultants to turn it around, and then we can make, we'll make it available.
Okay. Just as long as we have enough time in between the meeting and getting those review, changes for review.
Yeah. I mean, the good news is, most of the changes I'm talking about aren't super extensive, and not, none of them are really that substantive. Some of them have a little bit to them. The biggest thing is the transportation piece that you were talking about earlier. And even though it's not substantive changes, it's just that there's a lot of more information to be pulled into there.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope. Okay. Thank you. Okay, business item number 11. First reading of ordinance number 780, amending WMC 21.85.030 regarding development agreement review procedures. Mr. Grumbach.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I did not put a PowerPoint presentation together for this. Just real quickly, this is a follow-up on the city council's discussion that you had back in November, on November 12 of 2024. And basically, what we're doing is just trying to provide clarity on the planning commission's role. I think I mentioned this in the staff report. Following your conversation in, in November, I had a follow-up conversation with the planning commission, where we kind of dived into the provisions a little bit more detail, and kind of recognized that the code actually calls out different processes, and actually a different role for the planning commission on a development agreement versus a, like a code amendment. So it was acknowledged that we haven't necessarily followed those procedures that way, but that was all being clarified. So this new language in this ordinance kind of clarifies that a little bit further for not just us today, but down the road, and then also per the council's direction from that November about adding the 60-day clock, with the potential for having another 30 days that the city manager could extend it as well. I do want to know, you know, and again, we talked about this with planning commission, none of the development agreements, since at least I've been here in almost seven years, none of them have gone past the 60 days. So the 60 days won't be a problem to put into the ordinance. It's just, the main thing about it is it'll create better predictability that we can point to for applicants that are applying for development agreements and stuff. So happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Grumbach?
I move to pass first reading of ordinance number 780, amending development agreement review procedures as presented.
Second. Motion, second. Deputy Mayor Randolph.
I think this is more or less us drawing the time box. I believe Mr. Grumbach kind of put together that sometimes we don't follow our own procedures. So this is actually writing some of those procedures down with the addition of the 60-day time limit, which I guess, Mr. Grumbach, if, if there was any feedback from anyone on the which I guess, Mr. Grumbach, if there was any feedback from anyone on the Planning Commission, we'd love to hear that, but otherwise my understanding is we've never gone over that. So the time box is rather large, so we should basically just be writing down the time box and that's all that's happening here.
Any other discussion? Yeah, I concur with the deputy mayor. I think, I think setting the guidelines on that is going to be helpful, not only just for applicants, but also for planning. Having served on planning before, I think knowing certainty on what needs to be accomplished. And also highlight that if necessary, there's a 30-day extension option as by the city manager. If that were to become necessary, something unforeseen became overly complicated or necessary. So we have leeway to do that. So I think that's, that's a good goal. Okay, no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, most carries unanimously, thank you. Business item number 12, presentation of 2025 legislative session update. Mr. Hill.
All right, good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jared Hill and I'm going to be providing you with a brief legislative update. The 2025 regular session began on Monday, January 13th and is scheduled to end on April 27th, 2025. The last day the governor has to take action on a bill is Tuesday, May 20th, and the 90-day effective date is on July 27th, 2025. As a heads up, our next cutoff date is February 21st. This is the Policy Committee cutoff and the last day for a bill to be read in committee reports in the House of Origin. Three key priorities for the session. We've got the trestle, the community center, and a fully funded education system. I just want to speak to a couple of points here. The city has been working with our state lobbyists and delegation to explain the needs of our Move Ahead Washington funds to be moved into the 2025-2027 biennium. Representatives Dewar and Senator Stanford have both been very helpful and advocating for us. And we have forms submitted with both the House and the Senate requesting this modification. We will continue to echo this request to ensure the already volatile federal funding is obligated as soon as possible. And we appreciate the help from those offices in making that happen. And next thing I want to touch on, for our second priority, Councilmember Sarah Perry has been keeping us in the loop on the King County Aquatic Facilities Grant funded by the Parks Levy. The application period opens later this month and we plan to apply for the full $5 million grant to assist with the property acquisition for the NPRSA facility. We are also monitoring the federal budget process and are on standby for applications for federal earmarks or CPF funds to become available. Mayor Milman and I have been working on collecting letters of support for this initiative and we have roughly 20 different government and community organizations already signed on to support us. And then you've already seen this before, but we have additional legislative priorities that go deeper into the weeds beyond our main three initiatives. And then going to keep this short this evening and be cognizant of the time. While there are dozens of bills being monitored, there are four I was hoping to dive into tonight. Of course, if there are ever any bills you have questions or comments on, I'm happy to send you information or monitor those as well. First, we have HB 1217 and SB 5222, the Tenant Protections Bill. These are companion bills and are both making their way through the committee process. HB 1217 had its first vote and made it out of the Housing Committee with a nine-to-seven vote. This bill limits rent and fee increases, requires notices of rent and fee increases, limits fees and deposit, established as a landlord resource center, authorized tenant lease termination, and provides for attorney general enforcement. Other bills such as SB 5313 are working to tackle fees such as valet trash, but HB 1217 more closely mirrors the ordinance already passed by council last year. Yeah, last year. Next is HB 1299 and SB 5184. This one has been my headache this week. This bill is very problematic for the city of Woodinville. It removes the local ability to require the parking needed to accommodate the need, the new housing and commercial space coming to Woodinville. This bill only allows for one parking stall for every 1,000 square feet of commercial and .5 stalls for new housing units. We testified against this bill in the House Housing Committee today, and I think that was well received. We've been working with other east side cities to help communicate the concerns of lack of transit and how Woodinville is already exceeding growth numbers and should maintain the tools needed to continue to do so, to grow in a smart matter. With hundreds of thousands of annual visitors arriving by car, we need places for them to park.
Let me add on that one real quick. And I, when he said we testified, he means he testified, as in his first time testifying in front of a hearing today. And I'm so very proud of him for doing a very good job on that. He stepped in when I had some other obligations that I couldn't get to. And for any of you that have done that, that can be very intimidating, your first time doing that. And he did it with flying colors, so I just, I'm very proud of him, wanted to convey that. He did a good job.
Thank you, Brandon. Next is HB 1491, and this is a TOD bill. And I'm only bringing it to your attention because it's an excellent example of maximizing the investment in high-capacity transit and takes into account the concerns communicated by cities like Woodinville in previous sessions. In this bill, TOD is defined as commuter rail, fixed guideway systems, and bus rapid transit. We've communicated that these requirements should also be in place for areas without parking minimums and continue to echo that transit service needs to be restored to pre-pandemic levels and investments made before housing and parking requirements come into play. Finally, council has maintained a commitment to ensuring ownership opportunities are built alongside apartment rentals. One major hurdle in that space has been condos not being built due to the condo liability issues that have needed reform. And there's a step in the right direction here. We have HB 1403 seeks to do just that. Although the legislature has passed several amendments to condo statutes over the last few years, this bill addresses what many think is the key barrier to getting more condos built. The bill targets the issues around defects in condominium construction and how the current law has impacted insurance coverage of these building types. AWC is in support of this bill, in support of this bill. And while it's not explicit in your legislative agenda, I'm happy to communicate council support if that is the direction that you would like to take. And happy to answer questions on this or any other bills. But that wraps up my presentation.
Councilmember Hart.
So I personally know that we have supported condo liability reform in past years and think this would be a great opportunity to throw our support behind this bill and maybe help move it across the line. I'm also curious what AWC's opposition to HB 1491 centers around.
Yeah, for, can I answer that? For HB 1491, the opposition is due to it removes local planning ability from the jurisdiction, which is sort of just a blanket sentiment for bills that seek to remove that.
Okay, so it wasn't anything specific criteria, it was just local control? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bess Campbell.
There was a bill about renovating existing apartment complexes for affordability. I think Representative Dewar was one of the sponsors on that. Is that something that we can consider throwing our weight behind as well? Just as a, yes, this is another tool we can use for either affordability opportunities or conversions to condos, just another thing that we can work on. And then because we were talking about comp plan updates and solid waste and things like that, there are currently four bills regarding recycling in the state, but I think only one or two of them talks about producer liabilities to reduce the waste stream. Because that's one of our comp plan goals, I think that's something that we should consider saying, you know, not necessarily testifying, but yes, we support that. Just because I think we're at a point where there needs to be more momentum, I think, from cities to get that moving forward. So I would think we should definitely put our stamp of approval on that one as well.
Great, yeah. And also in line with the solid waste management bills that you're mentioning, there is another bill that AWC is monitoring for creating a rebate system for bottles and cans that you see in states like Washington or in Oregon and California that could be interesting for council to look at as well.
I'd like to talk about that condo liability law for a second. This is something that I've been pretty passionate about. I think it's, it's, it's a part of the housing matrix on, you know, a lot of people's paths, at least my generation, was started off with a condo and then moved to a townhome or a home, moved up the ladder and built equity. So I think that's something that we've been missing. I don't know that we've had a condo built in Woodinville since probably like 1996 or something, something like that. So we have discussed this and I think we've adopted it as an ownership opportunity. So, and I know, having talked to Representative Dewar and Senator Stanford, I know they're both in support of this concept. So are we okay going down there if that's something that they want to talk about? Is that, is that something that the council's okay with talking about? If that's some, a topic that comes up? I know it's been in the past, has been close to unanimous, if not unanimous, sentiment of the council. Is there any objection if any of our representatives want to talk about that? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bess Campbell.
Just more of a request. Can we get, so you may get drawn in to testify at all hours and whatnot, and you can't give us a heads up before you do that. But is there a way that you could give us, at least when there's a lot of committees that are taking testimony? Can you just send us all an email and let us know when we testified and what you said and how you did? I'm sure you did fine, but.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And I'm, if I'm doing that, I would have speaking points too, so I'm happy to share whatever, whatever I can, yeah.
Well, I just want to be able to say thank you because you're going to be, you're going to be the one who's tapped to jump in and it could be a hostile presentation or not. So thank you in advance, but I'd also like to maybe even watch.
Oh, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? Thank you. Public comments? Nobody sign up? Thank you. Reports, city manager.
I thought we were going to be way over scheduled tonight, but we somehow pulled it off. Good job, guys. Reports to city, two items just to report this evening. One of them, and I know several councilmembers have expressed interest in this, the coffee with a councilmember idea. We are tentatively setting up what we're calling our community conversations. We have some tentative dates and times for four events in March and April. I'm going to be sending an email to councilmembers probably tomorrow with those dates and times, asking you to indicate your availability and desire to attend those. I'm going to try to keep them, just for management's sake, at less than a quorum, so three members. But if you give me your availability, I'll try to schedule that as equally as possible. So look for that soon and respond when you get that, please, so I can start getting those dates firmed up. Second item, I know some of you have responded, but I did send out calendar invites for meetings with the facilitator for manual evaluation. If you haven't responded, those are in your inbox. That's March 20th. I've, I think I've got everybody's availability accounted for and hopefully reflected in those. But if you get a chance, you'll be meeting individually with the facilitator. I won't be there, even though the invite's from me, I just, somebody had to set them up. So look for those and accept those if those work. Those are my two for this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember reports. Councilmember Evans.
Okay, so on Friday, January 24th, we had our quarterly East Rail Regional Advisory Council meeting. It was a great meeting. We had a lot of stuff that we went through, including the work plan for the year, priorities, lots of different housekeeping items and just really reviewing all of the capital improvement projects that are going on throughout that project. It's very exciting to see. The second thing is, a couple of weeks ago, I was invited to speak at the Woodinville Wine Country Annual Meeting. It was really, really great to be able to talk about everything happening here in Woodinville. I want to thank the city manager and the assistant city manager, Mr. O'Neil, for helping to pull together some slides sort of at the last minute for me. I appreciated that because it's really great to be able to show the pictures in addition to just talking about things. The third thing is I had a request for the city manager. We've heard from the school district and we've heard from some of the cities around us. I don't think that I've heard anything from Woodinville or from King County on what the position is on the ice raids that are happening around our community and any, any direction that we're giving. I know that they've been happening all around us. And there's a number of people who are very impacted. So it'd be great if we could get that update on where we are with that. Other than that, I just hope everybody stays safe and I'm glad that we've been able to keep up with the snow and ice removal. Thank you.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, thank you. A couple of weeks ago, I had a meeting with Mayor Kelly Curtis of Kirkland, invited Mayor Milman to attend to talk about her experience in terms of the city involvement with their ballot measure to try to get aquatic center in Kirkland. We got a lot of useful information there that I know Mayor Milman brought back to the city manager. So that was a great conversation. And she also put us in contact with the president of an organization called Splash Forward, who, it's an organization that helps bring aquatic centers to different communities. And I know staff has scheduled a meeting with her to follow up and have that meeting. So that was a good meeting and hopefully we learn more from Splash Forward.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Councilmember Bess Campbell.
I was contacted by a constituent a couple of days ago who wanted to remind me that the bus capacity on the 311 is jammed by the time you get to the third bus stop out of the city limits. It's becoming a problem now. They're, they're starting to see people who can't get on the bus. And if that's an indication that we are in need of bus service, then I really think we need to pass that on. So the question was, when are we going to get bus service back and right? So that's, that's something I think that, as we talked about before, it can be, if we have a moment in Olympia, ask for more statewide funding to fund local programs. But also it's something that we definitely need to talk about with Sound Transit and WashDOT because we're, we're really at the point now with everybody going back to work for Amazon that people are not able to get to work on time. So this is becoming a problem.
Councilmember Hart.
Thank you. Last week, I was able to attend HDC's King County Affordable Housing Symposium. This has been a great event the last few years. Lots of detailed information, both on the housing market, on trends for affordability and just housing development in general, and kind of really specific details that can be taken back to the cities for the best practices in terms of getting more affordable development in their communities. So I was able to attend, got great information, shared the slides with staff members, and I'm happy to talk to anyone about my takeaways from that event. Also, related to Councilmember Bess Campbell's comment, there was an announcement today that the two-line will be fully opened up on May 10th, I believe the date is. So they've got the opening date set for May 10th. And then King County Executive Dow Constantine announced today that they were doing major investment in east side bus lines to coincide with that. I'm not quite sure what that means for our routes because he said that it would include both the elimination of suspended routes and the introduction of new routes to realign with that completed two-line. But all of that was just announced in the last day or two. And so we should be getting more information shortly to talk to our constituents about new bus routes and services in the city. That's it.
Thank you. Just one thing, our firefighters just got back here, I think, four or five days ago from California. They spent, we sent down two engines and two strike team leaders. They spent their time in the Malibu area doing structural firefighting, protecting properties. They fought many fires, didn't lose any property. No one was hurt, most importantly. And when they weren't fighting fires, they're running around, which is something I'd never experienced, was they were running around turning off open water and gas lines. So things were burnt down and open lines and just stuff spewing out. So when they weren't busy fighting the fires, they're running around doing that. So I highlight that because, like PSE, that, you know, we got lots of help from other jurisdictions, including Canada and other states. We, I was proud of our contingent that went down there and helped a really devastating fire down in California. So kudos to them and I'm glad everybody came home safe. And that's all I have. And that's all I have.
Mr. Jordan?